Good evening and welcome to the City of Palm Coast Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January the 4th, 2022, and with that I would wish everybody a very Happy New Year. It is 6:00 PM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. And this is our first meeting of the new year, so I take, I hope we take the spirit and the opportunity of the moment to enjoy the year ahead of us. So with that, I would ask that we all rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, reason, and justice for all.
The clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Branquino.
Present.
Councilmember Barbosa.
Present.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
I will now open the meeting for public participation, and I would ask this evening, we have a large number of members for the public, welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. This part of public participation will be to comment on items that are not a part of the following agenda. So anyone that wishes to speak on an item that is not a part of the agenda to follow, please come forward at this time and speak. All speakers will be allowed three minutes, and I'll try to be strict so that we respect everyone's time at the hearing, three minutes of time to make your public comment. So are there any members of the public who would wish to step forward at this time and make comment on items that are not a part of the agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Alvin, council members, staff, and Happy New Year. My name is Mark Lewis. My wife and I live at 15 Cottonwood Court, Palm Coast, and we live on one of the city's saltwater canals. I'm here tonight to speak again in favor of saltwater canal maintenance and dredging. As we all know, the saltwater canals are one of the earliest amenities. The canals are a very unique amenity that needs and deserves maintenance and dredging. This amenity also serves a vital role in stormwater management. Palm Coast, C&amp;F section residents pay higher taxes than non-canal neighbors and were responsible for the costly maintenance of our seawalls, bulkheads, and docks. The city ignores this remarkable dual-purpose amenity infrastructure with the lack of dredging and the lack of code enforcement scrutiny. My wife and I were here at the meeting on 12/7, and along with seven other citizens, expressed a desire to have the city maintain and dredge our saltwater canals. Many good suggestions were made by all citizens. Mr. Branquino, who says he doesn't know anything about dredging, indicated that the cost was estimated at $50 million. I'd like to know what study that was, or if it's not a study, if it's someone's opinion. I really request that the city council explore our options. This problem has evolved over 50 years. I believe the solution could mirror the freshwater canal model, where a schedule and budget dollars are allocated. I request a line item be added to the budget going forward to support dredging of our saltwater canals. And I request code enforcement find a way to periodically tour the canals and cite non-compliant, dangerous, and deteriorated conditions for correction. This will help maintain our saltwater canal conditions and not allow future deterioration. I have one last question. Mayor Alvin, you suggested we fill out questionnaire cards. My wife and I did that, and I haven't heard a response. This was on 12/7. If you could please address what sort of timeline we could expect, or at least someone saying we received your questions, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comment. Is there a next speaker, please?
Did we forget to put the timer up? Three minutes timer? Ah, I see, said the blind man. There we go. Okay. All right, somebody fell off.
You have a full three minutes.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Okay. Good evening, Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. We've got some very special people that work in this city, very special. That gentleman sitting over there is one of them, and that gentleman back there, Chief Forte, is the other one. And I always knew that they were at the top of their game. Well, 4:41 yesterday morning, we were sound asleep in our house, and we hear, I said, "What in God's name was that?" We get up, we can't find anything. My wife sits up in the bed and says, "Uh-oh, well, we have a crack in our ceiling." We go outside, and I've got a 65-foot tree that's now in pieces, and I have a hole this big in my roof. I said, "Uh-oh." So the first ones I call is that man over there. Well, they went out of that quick. Well, before I could even put things together, that man back there, he had a lot of trucks sitting in front of my driveway. They came in, they were very professional, first thing they said is, "Everybody out." I said, "What?" "Everybody out." It's okay. They checked the whole house, they made sure everybody was safe, nobody was hurt. But this was 4:41 yesterday morning. So I want to publicly make sure that the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department gets everything they ever want for the rest of their life. And the next first one, hold on, folks, the first one that says no to either him, because they gotta be crazy because he's got a gun, but anybody that says no to either one of these departments, I'm gonna be like your junkyard dog in your worst enemy, because you don't appreciate how good these people were at 4:41 in the morning. So please, anytime they want something, give it to them. That's the end, because otherwise you're gonna hear more than this. End of discussion.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name's Bruce Stone. I've been before the board in the past with a couple other people that I don't think are here tonight. I live on Seminole Drive, and I've lived in that area for seven years. We have requested several times to you, having over 1,500 signatures, to do something about the speeding. Someone is gonna get killed on that road. And this is what happened the last time, you don't answer it. And I've read all the remarks, you're looking into it, looking into it, before you, eight months ago, and Ms. Goldman Diamond addressed this seven years ago. I also testified in court against a contractor for Flagler County Building Department. You know what their answer is? You're never gonna do anything. You're gonna sit on your butts and do nothing. So which is the truth? Are you looking into it, or you're not gonna do anything? No response?
This is time for your public comment, so please finish your public comment.
Okay.
This is not, this is not a time for debate or forum. I'm recording your public comment, and we will address every public comment as we always do following the meeting through staff. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Ron Murphy. I live in the C-section of Palm Coast. I purchased a home here back in 99, and I did it because of the canal section and the fact you advertised it as sailboat country. A friend of mine, when I first moved here, had a sailboat. Most sailboats now, if you see them at low tide, they're leaning over because they don't have the water to support the canal depths. I don't know if you can do this, but since we have to pay to have docks built and seawalls built, maybe the city can provide a way for the landfill that needs to be put on the land side to be taken from the canals. So if you work with the contractors, you can probably take the dirt that we want to get out of the canals and put it on the land when they're building homes. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Carol Rydeki. I live on Seon Court. I sent an email to the mayor and the city council on December 16th, and these are some comments, abbreviated version of that letter. The Citation Sesame Boulevard project was originally scheduled to close the road from March 8th through June 27th, 2021. It was open for about two weeks but was closed again until December 17th. I called the mayor's office and spoke to Tyler, who explained some of the reasons. It may have been the contractor's fault, but ultimately I believe that the City of Palm Coast should have taken action against Klein and ensured that the project was completed months ago. Because of the extreme disruption over this period of time, I calculated extra mileage costs to our family of $2,383.36. The disruption also caused time. Although an extra four minutes minimum each way does not outwardly seem excessive, when spread over 38 weeks, it comes out to a family total of 45 hours and 58 minutes extra drive time. I can't believe the City of Palm Coast has allowed what was supposed to be a three-month project to be drawn out to over 10 months and still not complete. How is this legally possible? Weren't there any stipulations in the contract that would preclude this from happening? When it was apparent that this project would extend far beyond the planned completion date, why didn't the City of Palm Coast sever ties, contract with another service, and charge back the original contractor? Will this contractor be banned from bidding on future projects for the City of Palm Coast? Is the city doing anything to ensure that only reputable contractors are chosen in the future? In addition, this was not in my original email, what was wrong with Citation that it had to be redone in the first place? There's no apparent drainage in the first approximately 350 feet on the southeast side of Citation. Even where there is drainage provided, it does not appear to be at all adequate. At one point, a new tree fell over at the root base. Why has water been standing for several weeks? We've had no recent rain, and when the rainy season hit, it appears that the road could flood and become impassable. This morning, the water was being pumped out of the swale with a small pump on a 12-volt battery. Why did it need to be pumped at all if there was proper drainage? Is this going to be rectified? Is there an engineering oversight? Who and where are the engineers on this project? Stripe barrels and construction signs are still lining Seminole Woods Boulevard. On my way home today, I saw that Klein was finally working on the road, and it was closed down to one lane, and I had to go all the way around again. Why isn't this project finished? Klein has been awarded another job on Sesame Boulevard for a well project. Why? They haven't completed the one they already have. The citizens, and especially taxpayers of Palm Coast, have been taken for a ride. We deserve much better than this. I'd like to thank Mr. Danko and Mr. Barbosa for taking the time to respond to my original email. And if I may, I'd like to provide copies of my original email, addendum, and photos. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your comment. You can deliver those to the clerk if you would. Thank you.
My name is Mark Stansel. I live in the S-section. Matter of fact, I met the mayor at Friendship Club one day. Remember that? Nice talk you gave. Anyway, just a couple, some items. I live, Sesame and Seminole Woods is a very dark area, and the roads are hard to see, especially when it's raining. If they could put reflectors like they do on, like on Bel Air and some of the other roads, it would be easier to see when you're driving at night, you know, especially in the rain. And we go to the movies a lot and talk about reflectors. Over here on Central and by the theater and across and even up to here, the curbs come out, and it's hard to see at night, and if it, again, if it's raining, you could run over them real easy. Maybe put some reflective paint, yellow paint around the corners, so people would, might not have an accident. You know, that was one thing. There's a bunch of kids, apparently, in trucks over on Sesame, tearing up the sides of the road for joy, so the water doesn't drain right, and it's an ice sore, and they're committing a crime. I don't know if anything's being done about that. Somebody said that, they asked a police officer if they took a video of it, they said that wouldn't be admissible, but you know, you know, the police officer in Minnesota got convicted from a video. So that's something, you know, the police may look into is how to stop this vandalism. And the last thing is, I spent over 20 years in the Army defending this country, and I went through several presidents, and they were always my commander in chief. And when I turn off of one on the Seminole Woods, on the right-hand side, there's people, there's somebody flying a flag that has a foul word disparaging the current President of the United States, and I'm offended by that. And I was just wondering if there's something could be done about that, because even kids don't need to see that foul word disparaging the President of the United States. Thank you.
I thank you for your service, and next speaker, please.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. There's an old saying that says there's nothing new under the sun. Well, that's really true. We, about two or three years ago, we had met, there was a meeting over in the Flagler Auditorium from the city leaders around the area to talk about the upcoming water shortage to the state of Florida. And so what do we do? We just keep having things that require more water. And also, residents, a lot of residents here are complaining about traffic and about the infrastructure and everything, and that's not new. It's still going on. So I mainly want to talk about Florida Park Drive. When I lived on, was living on Florida Park Drive, we might have had 1,000 cars a day going through Florida Park Drive. Then all of a sudden, it's 2,000. Then it's 3,000 cars a day, 4,000 cars. We're up to 8,400 cars a day using Florida Park Drive as a thoroughfare. That's 3 million cars a year, okay, in a residential area. Well, that's not just the only bad thing happened. They took the basketball court that was in the middle of Holland Park and put it right next to Florida Park Drive. So the kids are out there with all their heavy cardio, breathing the fumes, brake dust, tire dust. So there really needs to be something done. I mean, I can, I will come back and talk as often as I can about the problem because it hadn't been handled. I've been at this 10 years, trying to get something done to fix the problem. The city offers solutions that won't greatly reduce the number of cars on the road. Well, the traffic fumes, the dust, it's toxic. We're breathing that toxic fumes. Many universities have done close proximity traffic to homes, and the harm that it causes people. There are such things as called nanoparticles that will harm your immune system so that you can't fight off viruses or bacteria. Well, we're going into pandemic, pandemic world now. So why can't we get some protection for our immune system? Is the World Health Organization and all these universities that done these studies over 20 years, are they wrong in what they're telling us about the harm? I don't believe so. I mean, I've been, I lived over there, and I've seen 16 elderly people die on that road. That were friends of mine. So I know that there's harm there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Happy New Year. Paul Vargo, 21 Colorado Drive. And what I did is, in the beginning of November, I received a study on the speed limit for Colorado. I have that here. I also have some notes that I put together just to summarize what they have. It's 38 pages of data, so I kind of broke it down and made it a little bit easier, and then a request for maybe a meeting with somebody to further discuss it. Basically, what the report came out with was 50% of the drivers up and down Colorado are over the speed limit. Some of those drivers approaching 50 miles an hour. Now, if you're familiar with Colorado, we have our bridge, and we have down to Covington and Colchester, and in that area, that's about a 350, 300-foot span of where cars are driving. A good number of them, 20% of that, 50% are driving between 35 and 55, or 35 and 50, excuse me, okay? But we have to keep in mind that, okay, the speed limit posted is maximum speed, right? It's not the suggested speed of Colorado, which is 30 miles per hour. What I'm, what I'm looking for, and what I'm gonna ask, is consideration for 25 miles per hour on Colorado and a 20 mile per hour bridge speed, okay? We have people who are fishing on that bridge. We have kids that ride their bicycles over that bridge. Kids hang around the bridge, they talk about it. Every night, there's people walking up and down the street. It's a popular place to go, Colorado, to walk up and down just for the sights and see what's going on. I don't think that speed bumps are really the answer. I don't think they're practical. I don't see us, excuse me, being able to get those. Besides that, they're hazard, not a hazard, but an obstacle for the emergency vehicles who want to go up and down the streets, and I get all that. The police force has got plenty to do without having somebody over there, you know, trying to enforce the speed limit, we say, but I, I'm not sure where to go with this, okay? But 50%, 50% is a little high for over the speed limit, I think, and some type of action maybe we can talk about and work out somewhere down the road. May I give this to?
Please, please pass that to the clerk if you would, and thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Robin Witcher. I live at 27 Cloverdale Court. To give you guys a, it's five blocks from the intercoastal, or the intercoastal walk, a parkway, sorry about that, right across the golf course, and I want to talk about the canal levels. I got a 34-foot boat, and at six-foot dock, my first prop is about 10 to 11 feet off the seawall. And routinely, my boat is sitting in the mud. I have two chip props because of this. I've got three neighbors, all of them have to take their boats out Friday night, many a times after dark, just so that they can take their boat and enjoy it on Saturday because the water level will be too low. I bought whips just to put my boat offshore, it now, well, I shouldn't say offshore, off the dock. My boat now sits approximately 12 feet off the seawall. It's a 70-foot canal. I take up a fairly good chunk of that 70 feet. So I'm encouraging you to please consider a program that would in some way manage the depth of canals. I forgot. I have several friends on the north side, and I'll take my boat up and we'll, we'll park at their dock. As I go through the north cut, I have less than five, I'm sorry, .5 feet of water below my boat. My boat draws 38 inches of water. That means that the canal at the center is approximately this height of depth. Please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. I'm Dan Bryant. I live in C-section, and I also wanted to speak about the canal just for a second. I have probably the deepest draft of any boat in the canal. I draw six feet. It's a 43-foot sailboat that's been in my family for 37 years. I, basically, if there's a shallow spot in the canal, I know where it is, because I've hit every one of them. And there are a lot of them, but I, the message that I wanted to get across was that I started looking into what, you know, what is actually involved in dredging? What are all the vocabulary words? Who do you have to go through? And we're talking, you know, it's not only City of Palm Coast and Flagler County, it's Department of Environmental Protection, it's with the St. John's Water Management District. Even, you could, some of the turbidity could even become the domain of the Army Corps of Engineers. So it's, all I want to say, I'm, one of the meetings that I was at late last year, someone on the council made the statement that they're not an engineer. Well, I am an engineer. I have, I have a doctorate in this, and I passed the bar exams. So I've worked a lot with legal documents as well. This is gonna, this is an interesting problem because it's a confluence of engineering and law, basically the law of regulations. One of the things I'm hoping that we can do as we move forward on this is really look at this as a, as the technical problem that it is, all the vocabulary words that go with this. The spoil, disposal, that's what you call the soil that one brings up, the spoil, the turbidity, which is caused by doing this, the regulations regarding the maintaining or the restriction of that turbidity. And the big one, though, is channelization, because I think there might be a little bit of confusion between what constitutes dredging and creating a canal and what constitutes maintenance operations. And they're all, I'd like to say they're very clearly laid out in the state regulations, but if you actually try to read them, like I said, even after the bar exams, those things are tough to read. But it does seem that we may be looking more at a channelization issue than an outright dredging. I don't know whether or not we will be upshoring or uplanding the spoil entirely, whether or not we're simply gonna be moving around, and something looks much more akin to what they call flushing of sediment or scouring of sediment, which is something that has to be done every now and then for maintenance. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is George Wade. I live at 12 Crossway Court East, and lucky for you, I don't have any prepared speech. But I'm just wanted to say, talk in favor of maintenance dredging of the canals. When I moved here 16 years ago, the primary reason why I came here was because of the canals, because it's a nice place to be during a hurricane. I was moving here with the canal, and I had plenty of depth. I checked the depth before I bought the house and everything. Well, now, there are times at low tide where I can't take my boat out because the canal's too shallow, especially at the end there where I try to go. And I just wanted to speak in favor of maintenance dredging for the canals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Eric Tunis, C-section. I was here last month.
I was here last month to talk about dredging the canals. An individual here said it would cost 50 million. That's 30 million more really it's going to be from studies that I've done with, with another individual who's looking into this. He also stated 100 boats were involved. I went out and counted them. There are 327 active boats in C-section alone, and I suspect behind Marina, there's probably three times that. And the tax office doesn't want to seem to want to give up how much sales tax income you're getting per gallon of fuel sold to these boats, but there's enough boats to qualify to get these dred, canals dredged out, cleaned out. Okay?
Thank you for your comment.
Alan Hendry, F-section on a canal, going with the theme of the night. I won't repeat everything. I'd like to echo the need for the canal dredging, you know, and again, it's a piece of city infrastructure. You pay attention to all the rest of the infrastructure. We're asking you to pay attention to this. I also would like to address a little bit about Councilman Brinkino's comments last meeting. You threw out the number, we just heard, 50 million. You threw out only 100 boats. I don't believe either are accurate, but I do want to say, when you look at dredging, I don't think, and it was sort of the engineer covered a little bit, we're not looking to go full width of the canals for dredging. I don't think anyone would propose that. If you look at a project, it would be much more narrow, literally, in that you would go through the center of canals, and not all canals need it right away. What we do need is for the city to take a look at this, to really explore what are the reasonable options and what are the costs. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker?
Paul Vargo, thank you. Thank you, good evening. My name's Tom Barrett, 172 Arena Lake Drive in Hidden Lakes.
Sir, if I may, is this regarding the agenda item which will follow tonight regarding?
Yes.
So I would ask you, would you, would you hold your comment until we have public comment regarding that agenda item? I had asked that at the beginning of public comment. That way, we'll have all those comments together, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Al Cryer from Committee on Safety on Cimarron. I'm going to cover two things real quickly, some of the stuff that, I want, leave you with a couple of figures from the year 2021, and we constantly made different statements about all the streets that have to go through this 1.2 miles of Cimarron. There are 16 different streets. I've listed, and I've gave Victoria a copy of this, there's was a copy for each of you for the file. We'll put it in the file. There are 16 streets that have to go through Cimarron, no matter where they go, they have to go or come through Cimarron. It starts at the sanctuary and ends up at Palm Harbor. It's a narrow road, you've listened to 25 presentations last year from kids, bikers, snor, I could go on and on and on. We missed snowmobiles, that's the only one we missed. But keep in mind, the backside of this here, I kept throwing out that $4 million comes out of this area. There's 800 residential properties. I've listed them on the back page by street. It should be part of the file if it's ever questioned when you're voting on something, it's there. So it's 3,200 cars a day, it's increased dramatically this last year. We've had a lot of property changes. Every, every empty property has a house on it now, so the problems still exist. Now, I want to kind of leave it at that for 2021, and we've made some progress in 2021. I'm very pleased. I want to thank everybody, from the city to the council, we've made some progress. We've got a long way to go in 2022, so, and I, and we'll take it step by step. It has to be done because we're starting now. I want to go into 202 a little bit. There's so many new people involved in our community that I want to get a feedback to them. They want to know what's going on, and we're running another survey again, which will keep you posted, what the feedback is. We're giving them different questions. Somebody might come up with a crazy idea. I hope somebody comes up with about 10 million bucks or so. I don't know what it's going to cost, but, and that we'll have to study as time goes on. We've got to take one step at a time, and so that's kind of where I want to leave it. I don't think I missed too much here. Again, I want to thank everybody. I want to wish everybody a nice New Year. I always end this way, you people, the people in the city, you work real, real hard to make this a nice place to live, and I like living here, and I'm sure a lot of other people do as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker?
Good evening. My name's Bill Powers. I live on Seal on a Place in Seminole Woods. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your service to our community. I know that it's an underpaid job, and thanks for your hard work. I am here to talk about the same subject you've heard a few times this evening, so it kind of helps my discussion along. The Seminole Woods project going on at Citation. So first of all, Citation Extension Property was sold by the city a few years ago. That should have taken more traffic through the corridor out the other end of the Citation. It's gone. It's been sold to private individuals. Anyhow, to go with that now, we've got this lifelong project of finishing the road. We've gone from having a four-laned road with a median to a narrow winding road, no-turn lanes coming off of that to the side road, and then when you go out onto Seminole, the turn lane is ridiculously narrow, and I don't understand. There is a Florida State Handbook that describes what road widths are supposed to be, especially on curves, and this is at a curve, and it doesn't look to me like that's been explored carefully. But 10 months into the project, and we're still waiting for it to be finished. As we heard earlier this evening, lakes on either side of the road after rain, very little rain, it's been a dry period, and yet, we got lakes. So with that going on, all the traffic that had to go around because of this 10-month-long project, my own family witnessed two serious accidents where all the traffic had to exit on Sesame, another curve, 55 mile an hour speed limit, and people trying to get out onto the road with all of this going on. So I want you to know there's lives that have been probably not so well taken forward because of what's going on with this road project. I'd like to see some more attention paid to it. I did write one letter on this, and I didn't get an answer back, and I understand you're busy, but I said, just good enough. We need to look around at the projects we're doing. Did we do what we could have done? Much more growth is going on in that area, several new projects, new subdivisions, hundreds of homes going in, and there doesn't seem to be enough traffic management. If a new home subdivision's going in, will it have an ingress and egress lane, or will it simply dump out into the traffic pattern? Things that we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any additional speakers in this section of public comment? Please step forward now. Seeing none, I will close this section of public comment, and I will refer to the interim city manager who has made note of each comment, and I'd like to make sure that each comment is addressed and all letters and emails that have been received are responded to, assuming that there was a question attached to them. So you have a notation on each one, and any of the public members who spoke this evening, it is helpful if you do fill out the public comment card, just so that we have an additional record, so that we can respond correctly, completely, and with all of the information that city staff is able to put together to answer the question correctly. And then I would ask councilmen at this time, does anyone care to address any of the specific issues at this time? Vice Mayor?
All right. Good evening and Happy New Year to all of you. This is regarding the dredging of the canals. I'm going to, a gentleman asked me, and I mentioned there was only 100 boats. Let me just tell you, three years ago, about, I was elected for maybe about three months, I was designated the person that would go to St. John's and to talk with him about our waters and all of that. That was a gentleman, I forget his name. He was the one that told me that. Back then, you had in between 25 and 30 miles of dredging. Back then, we already needed dredging. Let's be clear about that. Dredging is needed. The gentleman said he counted 327 boats, no doubt about it, but if you go and try to find the registered boats, over 20 feet, over 20 footers are, I think was a little over 100. But here's what I'm going to do, so you could see that I'm in this with good faith. You are citizens of this town. You pay your taxes. You entitled to come here and tell us exactly what is going on. And with the permission of the proper councilman of that area, I would like to see if you get together, get one or two main persons, let's, you work with me. Once again, if, if I'm allowed, unless the councilman from that area would do it, even though we all, you know, name that large. If we could do it together, let's go through it together, and let's make sense together. I don't want to be here and say, no, 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 because I can't say no. We working here for you, to the betterment of the city, and if we're not doing, we're not doing a good job. I wanted to be clear that I'm not against anything. I just want to make sure that we could afford it, and that's where I'm at. Now, if the councilman, the respected councilman from your sector, does not really want to create that committee, then I will do it. I would not go over his head to do it, okay? But if you want, please get one or two persons, and let's work 40, 50, 60, 100 hours together and see what your input is, that we could make sense out of it. And when I told you, just for you to know, $50 million, I was being extremely conservative, extremely conservative to do those 25 miles of dredging. But once again, my offer stands, if the proper councilman doesn't really want to meet with you, then I'll get together with you and we'll work, 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 and do that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just as kind of a point of order, so please feel free to schedule a meeting with the resident, with residents, that's fine. It would not be a committee. A committee would require, you know, a different procedure, but I would encourage, you know, everyone up here to have these meetings. There was a request, I'm sorry, I forgot to underline that before, there was a request for a meeting from one of the earlier speakers today. So we have the contact information, and we will follow up, so I would encourage that.
Let it be known that I won't do it unless I, the person-
That'll be your decision, okay.
Out of respect.
Yep.
May I?
Yeah, please.
I would also just like to comment about the canal issue. I was encouraged by our council's consensus that we are intrigued on many levels, but trying to exactly put parameters on the problem we're trying to solve, and I kind of relate to Councilman Brinkino's comments that we're not dredging professionals. And if there's anything that has come to light in the diversity of residents that have come forward, is the amount of different problems that can contribute to filling in the canals and how we're going to rectify this problem and solve it in the most effective way so that this doesn't just occur again. And one of the biggest issues is obviously seawalls, and I'm curious and interested, and I'm thankful that our council seems to be willing to get a feasibility report or an engineering report on exactly what the problem is we're trying to solve and how to do it most effectively. I think $50 million could be extremely low if someone wanted to redredge every canal, but I don't think that's the solution. And I'm curious what's going to come out of the feasibility report so that we can see the problem we're trying to solve, but perhaps channelization is a potential fix, and I hope that there's a duration attached to these solutions that are potentially proposed to the city. I'm, I'm encouraged that we're all kind of in the same boat, pardon the pun, wanting to solve this canal issue. So I thank all the residents who are coming out here, and hopefully, we can, in this upcoming strategic action planning session, earmark some funds for this report to be considered. Thank you.
First, I'd like to- Comment, Councilman Barbosa?
First, I'd like to thank all the residents that came out, because many times during these meetings, those seats are all empty, and it's great to see it full, it's great to hear the feedback. The issue on the canal, that is my section. My email's plastered everywhere, my phone number's plastered everywhere. I'll leave the business cards here if anybody needs my phone number. Please call me, we'll, we'll put a group together, we'll call Mr. Brinkino, and we'll get, we'll get something done here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Danko.
Yeah, I want to speak about the canal situation, but before I do, we had a couple of folks here tonight speak about the problems on Citation and the endless construction or whatever we're doing there. I'm just wondering if we could have our city manager meet with these folks and let them know what the situation is and what the delays have been and give them some reassurance.
I think there was a request for a meeting, and I've directed the interim city manager to follow up with that meeting, so, and we'll report back.
And, and on the canal situation, I think it's both Councilman Brinkino and Kalufis said, we're not experts on canals, and we're not. So I know we've been talking about doing a feasibility study, but we haven't instructed our city manager or staff to look for a company to do that yet. If I am correct, am I correct on that?
What the, the interim city manager, I believe we did make it a priority for this, for the national survey. Can you update us on that? Because we, we had discussed this some time ago. Go ahead.
Yes, the direction that was last given was we discuss adding it to the citizen survey. We're actively pursuing this topic through staff of just understanding the elements that are part of the consideration for council in preparation for the strategic action plan evaluation process.
My understanding, though, is we have not actually begun a search for a firm that specializes in dredging. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I, I'd like to make a motion, if I may, that we instruct our city manager to instruct staff to begin that process of looking for a firm so we know who's out there, we have some idea what these folks charge, because I don't even know how many companies out there do this stuff, but if I could make that motion?
I'll second that.
So, Council?
No, we can, so I was just going to note that from a legal standpoint, I think the determination first needs to be who owns the underlying submerged lands of the canal.
Well, we do, the city does. It's, it's part of our city, I believe.
Oh, do we have, okay, so from my understanding, I did not know that we had clear chain of title to the city of those canals and the extent of that chain of title.
So, Council brings up a good point, so let me just backtrack, so I agree. The idea was to confirm with the public through the survey that this was a priority. I think the consensus among city council is, yes, we agree that it is a priority and it needs attention. The second step is obviously to define the scope of work. None of us here, and I'm not sure anyone in the audience, has a full and complete understanding of the scope of work. That would be necessary to determine the cost of the project, which would then tell us what the funding source might need to be. I think what you're asking is can we expedite the selection of a, a third party to conduct the survey? So the only, the question I have-
And I'm not saying that we pick one right now.
The only hesitation I have, no, the only hesitation I have is, along with that motion, I think we need to hear a, how much do we want to spend on it? In other words, the surveys are from here to here. I don't know the answer, but certainly, the motion is in play. There is a second. I would ask you, would you be willing to amend the motion and cap the expense, just so it's-
The expense of the actual company that would-
Of, of, the cost of, of the survey to determine the scope of work.
I guess, I'm not even, what I'm saying is, all I'm asking is that we find out what companies are out there and, and explore, I'm not saying we commit to any price or anything, but if we don't start searching- but if we don't start searching for these companies and start saying, okay, we're the city of Palm Coast, we have 25, 26 miles of saltwater canals, they do need to be dredged, but we're not sure how much. What do you guys charge to come in here and do that? And then, you know, if they come back and they charge, you know...
Let me suggest this.
I think we're on the same page, though.
If you would, if you would amend your motion to direct staff to recommend several options for a survey company along with the costs...
Sure.
On a comparative basis for city council to, to choose.
I, I will amend it.
Would you amend your motion that way? And then there was a second.
Yes.
Very good.
What's the demo?
Well, just for clarification, we're essentially requesting a request for solutions, right? Is that really what this process is? And I'm totally okay with that. I just think clarification may be, let's expedite the request for solutions or an RFP so that we can get some people interested in this. I don't think legally we could go out and just start asking companies how much they would charge without having a formal bidding process, is that true? So the RFS would come into play.
So that's why I'm gonna ask staff to come back to us with that detail. I think that's what the motion has been amended to.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Council has made a good thing. Who owns the canals and who owns the intercoastal? Because all that sand comes in from the intercoastal, too. So they would probably have to get involved.
So if I may, if, if you would, if you oblige me and hold those comments, there's a lot of detail, and I think we've all admitted, and certainly I would be first, I have no expertise in the area. I would want to examine the facts and those are all legitimate questions and they do have to be answered because they are going to be part of the solution. So what we are doing here is we are expedite, expediting staff's delivery of our options in choosing a, a third party along with the costs associated with it so that we can choose and select a, so that we can put out an RFP, I guess, is, 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 I think that covers it. Now, Council, would you like to correct all of that?
I don't even think we did a motion, just we got a direct...
So, yeah, so my first point is, I don't think we need a motion. I think consensus of the board will work as far as directing staff on how to proceed forward with this particular matter. That's just a logistics and you can withdraw your motion and we can do it by consensus.
As long as we proceed...
Withdraw, withdraw the motion.
Well, as long as...
Okay, give me a second. And, interim city manager, can you give me a date?
Thank you.
That you will come back to city council with our, with the, the selection process for choosing a, a third party.
Mayor, I did not come prepared with the timeline, unfortunately, tonight, to make sure that we're clear. I, I have clear direction from the dais tonight, from each council member, and we will expedite the process and we'll come back with a timeline for that, if that's to council's pleasure.
So, so we'll, so we will chase you through the next meetings until we receive that. Fair enough?
Fair enough, thank you.
I will withdraw this motion based on our consensus.
And the second? Very good. We all satisfied with that?
Very nice.
Very good, thank you, okay. Any other comments from city council at this time regarding the public commenters this evening? Very good. So we will move on. The next item are the minutes from prior meetings. We currently have received copies of the minutes from the December 7th, 2021 business meeting, the December 14th, 2021 workshop, and the December 14th, 2021 special meeting.
Who to approve those meetings?
I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously, thank you, clerk. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a presentation this evening. And Councilman Barbosa, if you would deliver the, the presentation, please. We've made you come up twice this evening.
Thank you for making a difference. On December 1st, 2021, Richard Bradley witnessed a Palm Coast resident who had just been struck by a vehicle while riding his bike. Mr. Bradley was only witnessed to stop and offer aid to the injured man. He stayed with the victim until emergency medical services arrived. We thank Mr. Bradley for his actions in being a good Samaritan and staying with the injured man until help arrived. For this reason, we recognize Mr. Bradley with a certificate of application. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, we recognize this good Samaritan because this is proof positive that we are a community, we are a village, we care about each other. And let that be part of our message on this first meeting of the year carrying through the full year. So thank you for that very, very much.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion and this motion would save the city money. And what a great way to start our new year. Today, our city is in a better shape, thanks to all the city workers and our city intern manager. She is doing a great job. I would like to see this continue. I'd like to make a motion to make Denise Bevin from intern city manager to city manager.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion at this time?
I would second it for further discussion.
So we have a second?
Yep.
So now I would open up that motion for discussion by city council.
My comments would be that I would very much prefer to speak to Denise before engaging in a vote and potentially being divisive. I respect Denise and her capacity and the tremendous job that she's done. And I've expressed that not only to staff, but also to her directly. I feel better and safer than ever with her at the helm and she's doing a tremendous job. I just feel that it would be most professional for me to be able to have a one-on-one conversation with Denise before this, this arising, to make sure that we're on the same page. And there's no disrespect that I wouldn't like to have a vote tonight, but with that being said, I would withdraw my second.
So, so we have a motion now without a second? So...
I'd like to make a motion, change the motion.
Oh, okay, you're gonna amend it?
Change the motion.
Well, let's...
To give everybody time.
How about, would you withdraw that motion?
Okay, I would.
Okay, so a new motion now.
I would like to give everybody time to have a one-on-one and maybe bring this motion or vote back to the next meeting.
That's a motion.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Well, I think you'd be able to make the motion in the, in the upcoming meeting. I don't necessarily think that we would need a motion to confirm that we're going to make another motion in the upcoming meeting, right?
So, so we'll avoid the discussion. So there is no second to the motion at this time? So the motion fails. And then, let me comment. So we have a process in place, in play, that would accomplish, I think, what you're trying to motion for. Appreciate the comment about the savings involved. But I think, so it's not confusing, that process that we have in play could get you to the, to the same, to the same ending.
Just trying to save the city some money.
All right, I just have to say that I did speak with Denise Bevin a while ago and Denise showed absolute no interest in the position. I don't know if you have spoken with her regarding the motion you made today, but she expressed to me no interest in that.
Well, if we had a second, we could have discussed this, but nobody wanted to discuss it.
But the thing is that it would be, I think it'd be very important to find out from her.
Yeah, if we have a second motion, you could just ask her.
Well, I asked her already in the past.
All right, so we'll keep the, we'll keep the process intact as, as we had voted on at the, at the previous meeting at this time. Okay, any other comment by city council as we move away from public participation? All right, before we begin the next section, I want to take a moment to discuss city council processes relating to approval or denial of items presented to council at all business meetings. For each workshop, city council receives a comprehensive overview of each item. At that time, it is council's opportunity to provide opinions and ask questions on each item. Just as a reminder, items that are quasi-judicial in nature will require council to base their decisions on only what is presented at the scheduled public hearings conducted at the business meetings. The purpose of a business meeting is for council to review and weigh all of the evidence and take action with decisions based on all information presented both at the prior workshop and today. So that's just to clarify the purpose of our next section, which will be the ordinance reads. So with that, I would ask council to read the title into the record of the first ordinance, please.
Yes, this is number three, item number three on the agenda. An ordinance of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, establishing the Seminole Palms Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for functions and powers of the district, designating the initial board of supervisors of the district, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. This is a legislative matter that you'll be reviewing today. And as we discussed at the workshop, there's standards under Chapter 190 for approval of community development districts.
Did anything change from the last presentation?
No. Mayor, city council, good evening tonight. Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. Yeah, this, this item was heard at your December 14th workshop and we followed a, with a special meeting on the 14th. There had been no change and we, we are ready to take action on this community, establish limited community development district. And if you have any questions, we're here and so is the applicant.
So does, do any city, city council members need a refresher, an update on the item?
I just would like to thank staff and applicant for thoroughly explaining the difference between an HOA and a CDD in our previous meeting at length. Thank you.
Very good. Okay.
I don't know, maybe a quick refresher for the people that are here?
Well, I'm, okay, so at this time, I would ask, is there any public comment regarding this ordinance item? If there is, please step forward at this time. So there is no comment? I will bring it back to the dais. Any additional...
Mayor, can, can we just ask if the applicant would like to speak? I believe the applicant's here.
The applicant's here.
Are you introducing the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jared Earlywine, here with KU Law Group on behalf of the applicant. We're available for any questions, but otherwise we don't have any presentation for tonight.
Very good. Are there, so now that the, the applicant has introduced himself, are there any members of the public that would like to make public comment about this item at this time? Seeing none, closed public comment, come back to the dais.
Who to approve this?
Okay. I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. Any future, any additional discussion? So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, counselor, if you would.
Yes, this is item number four on the agenda. An ordinance of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, establishing the Palm Coast 145 Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for functions and powers of the district, designating the initial board of supervisors of the district, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Council members, this is, again, is a legislative matter, much like the last one. Your approval will be based on the Chapter 190 requirements.
Mayor, city council, same thing. This was at the December 14th workshop, followed by the special meeting. We're here for questions and...
Right, there is no presentation. Does anybody need a refresher on the CDD item? Okay, no. Then I would ask, any members of the public would like to make public comment at this time? Seeing none, closed public comment, come back to the dais. Any further discussion?
Who to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And a second as well. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does clerk have it?
Motion passes five to zero.
Item number five, please, if you would, counselor.
Yes, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the city of Palm Coast 2035 comprehensive plan, as previously amended pursuant to Section 163 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map flume designation for 141.5 acres of certain real property from residential loan destiny and conservation, which are Flagler County designations, to residential and conservation, which are city of Palm Coast designations, as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance, including a site-specific policy to limit development on the subject properties to 217 single-family residential units, providing for conflicts, ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and an effective date. This city council members, it's also a legislative matter. However, it's a comprehensive plan amendment, so the standards for that are different than what was previously discussed in Chapter 190.
Thank you, counselor.
Mayor, city council, this was approved by, by you on the November 16 business meeting. But since this was a large-scale future land use map amendment and went to the state Department of Vehicle Opportunity, our senior planner, Jose Papa, would just have a brief summary, an overview of, of what the flume amendment was since it's been, been since November.
Mr. Papa, please.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of city council. Happy new year. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. And as Mr. Tyner mentioned, these are basically our housekeeping amendments since this parcel was annexed into the city from unincorporated Flagler County and the future land use map amendment. What changes the, the designations on the property from Flagler County designations to city designations of residential and conservation is what the future land use map designations would be, with a site-specific policy that would limit development on the site to 217 dwelling units. As mentioned, this amendment was sent to the state for comments from various state agencies. We did not any receive, we did not receive any comments of objections from those state agencies. So the applicant, so we, we believe that this is ready for your adoption at second reading. The applicant's team is here in attendance if they'd like to add something at this point.
Thank you. I, I have a question for you. A little bit on the side. Do we expect a large number of these transfers of zoning from, from county to city in the future? Has there ever been a discussion about mapping a, a unified list of, of zoning designations so that we don't have to administer them every time on, on each future annexation?
Yeah, we do have a few, mayor. Not, not a whole lot that we have county designation. When, when a project comes that if we have existing that's in the city of Palm Coast, and we do have a handful.
Yeah.
When they come in for a proposed development, we will initiate that flume or rezoning at that time. Now, as far as lands that are within our service area, for our water service area, there's maybe a handful left. There's, there's not a whole lot left on that area.
So this is, this is probably the most efficient way to move forward. Very good. Okay? Mr. Papa, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
And I understand the applicant's team is here in attendance if there should be any questions. So I would ask city council, any questions on this item? We, we've kind of been through it.
Just that this flume amendment, does it change the shape of the, what's gonna be built there from the last time we were here?
No changes from what was presented last time.
Thank you.
Jerry Livingston here with Livingston and Sword. I don't have a presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, you're off the hook. Do any members of the public want to make a public comment at this time? I see one, please.
Sally Aronoff and I'm Flagler Beach. First, I would like to commend the staff for increasing the conservation area by eight additional acres. That is, thank you. What I would like to ask today, though, are two items. While your staff is working with this to finalize the site plans, I would... While your staff is working with this to finalize the site plans, I would like to suggest increasing the corridor on the west, on the east side of this land that abuts the west properties along, no, I don't remember the name of the road that goes along the intercoastal.
Talking about Roberts?
No.
John Anderson.
Lambert.
Lambert, thank you, I apologize. But the west side of Lambert. To increase that by a minimum of 50 feet wide, and that would create a corridor for the displaced animals that are going to be coming down, and that would give them a safe haven. In addition, the second thing I would like to ask is, you can see where that jog right in the middle that comes in at a right angle? There are 13 properties that are long. There I go again.
Lambert.
Lambert.
Lambert. I don't know why that's a hard name for me to remember, but there are 13 properties that are in that jog area. And the conservation area of this property does not go along the west side of that. So I would advise that the east side of this property that abuts the west side of those 13 properties, that there be a conservation area along that line, and that would give a contiguous corridor all the way down. And I'm also working with the adjacent property of this property owner that is in Flagler Beach to do the same thing. Thank you for your attention and for consideration of these two requests.
Thank you for your comment. Would the applicant like to respond or get back to the, to the public?
Yes, sir. Again, Jay Livingston here with Livingston and Sord. I have actually been in communication with her, and obviously, we have no control over what's east of that property line, the area she's concerned about. The nice thing about the amendment, and Jose, I don't know if you have a, the map that shows the conservation designation? If not, it's okay. If you all recall, the, the wet, the eastern portion of the property is, was in county conservation, about 13 acres. We expanded that to about 21 acres because we had better wetland data. So we were able to actually expand the conservation area by that, that number of acres. The project to the south, Beach Park Village, I also represent that developer. It's the same development group doing both projects, and that's in the city of Flagler Beach. So you can see the Grand Reserve East proposed flume, that light green area is the area that's going to be in, in the conservation designation under the future land use map, which will create that corridor. The break she's talking about is where that little dog leg is, and that is lots that are actually platted that carry over from Lambert. You can't see the lot lines, but if you go to the property preservers website, you'll see that those lots are the kind of lots that are platted into the marsh. You can't build on them, but they're platted into the marsh.
And they're not in the city, Jay.
And they're not in the city. They're in the city of Flagler Beach or the county. I think there's an overlap, right? Yeah. So I actually was emailing Larry Torino in the city of Flagler Beach this afternoon. I will get with the speaker because the, the PUD for the, the property to the south, just north of Wadsworth Park, actually already has a conservation area built into it that I think will satisfy the with concerns. And then we'll talk to Larry about what can be done in the city to, you know, it's unlikely it'll ever be developed because it's, it's a salt marsh. So the development is unlikely, but in order, but there's no reason for it to be designated the way that it is if it will be in perpetual conservation. So it's not a bad cleanup idea when it comes to just our, our land use planning. And I totally agree with the corridor, because my parents live right across the intercoastal in Flagler Beach, and my dad had one of the greatest gardens in the world since they first moved there in 1996, and he can't grow anything anymore because the deer crawl into the backyard every night and eat everything, so.
So, so we'll rely on you to follow up with the public commenter, if you would?
Yes, sir. I will.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment from the public at this time? If not, I will, oh, there we go.
Seat car, Palm Coast. The city of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan, goals, objectives, and policies. The objective is to protect the residential area for inappropriate land uses, protect predominantly residential areas from the intrusion or incompatibility or more intensive land uses. The city shall amend the LDC to include development standards that provide greater setback and buffering requirements between established residential areas and other uses to ensure compatibility between uses. Policy 3.3.5.2. The city shall develop neighborhood compatibility criteria, which shall be utilized by the city to reboot view applications for future land use, mount amendments, rezonings, and special exceptions to ensure that the proposed land use, uses and development do not adversely impact existing residential areas. So I, my question is, how, how are you going to determine what's adversely impacting a residential area? I, I'm asking this mainly because in my neighborhood, the traffic's too much. So, okay, so now we're going to put 217 units over here in this neighborhood, in this neighborhood, which is approximately 430 cars, going to be added to that neighborhood. And how is it going to affect these existing residential areas that are in that area? I mean, that's just a question I'm asking.
So why don't we direct your question to Mr. Tyner? And I think your PLDRB goes through a routine when these requests are, are debated, and they look at your density charts and a number of other data criteria in order to answer the question of what would adversely impact. Can you enlighten us a little bit with that? I think that's-
Yeah, I mean, we're talking different levels. You know, right now, we're at the future land use map level. We have certain criteria, and, you know, as, as one of the citizens who spoke earlier commended staff for the environmental conservation area, you're making sure it's compatible in that buffer for conservation areas. When we get a little bit more into the site plan criteria, of course, you know, that application comes to us, we require traffic studies, we make sure that the level of service on, on the road is being maintained, if there's any safety improvements that need to be done, that's done, that's done at that site plan level, you know, for making sure fire trucking get in there, health and safety, all aspects are being taken care of. And then that does, you know, a lot of our site plans will go to the planning board, and they are our board that, you know, makes sure also that we are in compliance with our land development code of all our, without the criteria.
So what I would ask you to do is, you know, at your convenience, make a date with Mr. Tyner or his staff to talk about the specific geography that you're referring to. Because I don't think you want to use this template for a different area that you're talking about. I understand the, the concern and the question, but I think the source of information that you're looking for could be found in Mr. Tyner's staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public to make comment at this time?
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Got a couple of questions. Where are these 217 units going to be built? And what type of units are they going to be? Are they going to be houses? Are they going to be condos? Are they going to be townhouses? And how high are they going to be? Are they going to be one-story, two-story, or three-story?
So would, would the applicant like to summarize quickly? We've, we've reviewed this in the first, in the first read. Mr. McDonald is available in the, in the package from the prior read, the detail on this specific. But if you wouldn't mind just giving us a quick-
Yes, sir. Jay Livingston, Livingston and Sord. The next application that you're going to hear, the second read, is the rezoning portion of this, and that is to bring it into SFR 1. So that would define the lot size. The layout that we did was fairly large lots that we couldn't really fit more than 217 in, because of there's, the, the green area that you see is just the conservation area, there's actually some fairly significant wetlands on the property that won't be impacted. And the, and the project was designed to avoid all impacts except a minor one where the access road is, because there's no other choice, because of where the wetlands are located. So it'll be single-family, it'll be your standard SFR 1, single-family, and that will be locked in, assuming the, the council chooses to approve the second read of the next application you're going to hear on your agenda, then that would lock that in to be conformed with the SFR 1 zoning district. Does that answer your question, Jared? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment, come back to City Council. Any additional discussion? I have a motion to approve.
Seconded.
And a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes five to zero.
Clerk has it. Thank you. Counselor, if you would, move on to the next item.
Yes, this is item number six on the agenda. An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the zoning designation for 141.5 acres from Flagler County designation of planned unit development to city of Palm Coast designation of single-family residential 1 and preservation. Subject property is more particularly described in Exhibit A and graphically depicted in Exhibit B, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for non-codification, and providing for an effective date. City Council, this item is a quasi-judicial matter. Therefore, if you've had any ex parte communications regarding this case, they should be disclosed at the record, on the record at this time.
So I would ask City Council, any ex parte?
None.
Councilman Barbosa?
No.
Nor I.
And as I said, this is a rezoning matter, so rezonings have standard of review. As you know, a, a little while ago, there was a comp plan amendment change to add a property rights element that was required by statute. The one that really comes into play here, the policy, is the one regarding the right of a property owner to use, maintain, develop, or improve his or her property if it's in compliance with local laws. So I just wanted to point that out, because that was a recent thing that was done, kind of a new standard that's been added to the comp plan, so as long as we're all on the same page.
We signed off on that about a month and a half ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, okay. Thank you, counselor. You have a presentation?
Yeah, Jose Papa will have just a brief slide overview.
Good.
All right. Just, this is a companion item to your, the previous item, which you approved.
And I'm sorry, just a footnote, so there's no confusion. The Grand Reserve title is not to be confused with another location, correct?
Yes, sir. Maybe, whatever, Grand.
Grand.
We have so many grands.
Yeah.
Thank you. But again, so this, just to maybe help clear, this parcel is located on Roberts Road about 0.6 miles north of State Road 100. So it currently retains the Flagler County zoning designation, since it was annexed into the city, and this item, if approved tonight, would clean that up to grant this parcel city Palm Coast designation. There's been no changes from the first reading. The designations on the property would be single-family residential 1, which are shown in the light brown areas, and those areas which were designated conservation in the future land use map, which you saw previously, would be designated as preservation, and is identified by the dark green areas at, at this location for this parcel. Staff believes that this is ready for your adoption.
That concludes your presentation?
That concludes staff presentation.
City Council, any questions? Any refresher needed on the item?
None.
Okay, with that, I'll open up for public comment. Does anyone in the public wish to comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Any further discussion here on City Council? Seeing none?
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve and a second as well, all in fa, um, any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes five to zero.
Clerk has it. Thank you. Counselor?
Yes, the next item on the agenda is Agenda item number seven. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, to annex property to be included within the corporate area and city limits of the city of Palm Coast, providing for the annexation of approximately 30 acres of property described in Exhibit A to this ordinance, and lying in the areas proximate to the existing city limits of the city of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, providing for annexation in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for annexation of real property, amendment of corporate city limits, providing for rights and privileges resulting from annexation, effect of annexation upon land uses, providing for effect on ad valorem taxes, providing for effect on businesses and occupations, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. This is a legislative matter, Council members, and the review, as we described, criteria as was described in the previous workshop on this matter is as per 177.44 Florida statutes.
So you're asking if we've had any ex parte on this?
No.
Not necessary? Okay, fine.
Right, it's legislative, thank you.
Mayor, City Council, you know, we approved it on December 7th. Mr. Papa just has a brief overview, since it's been since December 7th.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick overview, again, it's a 30, 30-acre parcel at the west end of Whiteview Parkway. So the west side of US 1 is where this parcel's located. It's currently undeveloped. The reason for the request for annexation, of course, is that it's within the city utility service area, and so they will be seeking service from the city for water and sewer. With that, it meet, does meet the criteria of Chapter 177 Florida statutes, where it is contiguous to the city boundary, it is compact, it's not within another incorporated municipality, it will be used for urban purposes, and it does not create a municipal enclave. So with that, staff continues to recommend approval of this annexation.
Good. Questions from City Council? No questions at this time. I would invite the public to comment on this item at this time. Is there anyone? Seeing no one, back to City Council. Any further discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion?
Seconded.
And a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes five to zero.
Clerk have it? Very good, thank you. We now move to the ordinances of first read, and I understand there's a handout associated with the next item, is that correct?
Yes, the clerk has a handout that was provided by the applicant that she's going to pass out now. This is item number eight on the agenda, if I may read the title, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the official zoning map for 23.33 acres of certain real property described as tax parcel identification numbers, 32-11-31-3620-0000-0060, and 32-11-31-3620-00000-0051, located on the west side of the Old Kings Road, about one-half mile north of the intersection between Town Center Boulevard and Old Kings Road, and more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, from the, from the general office zoning district to the general commercial zoning district, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Council members, this is a quasi-judicial matter, so if you've had any ex parte communications regarding this matter with anyone, please disclose it on the record at this time.
So I have had ex parte communication with both the, the applicant and with residents of the community, but I am prepared to make a decision on only the evidence that is presented to me here at the dais. Any other members?
Like you, same thing. I've had none.
None whatsoever.
Okay. Counselor? Okay. Proceed.
Yes, you can proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Good evening. Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. This is for a rezoning. It was heard by the planning board and recommended approval by, by the planning board. Mr. Hoover had provided a thorough staff report that's in your application. It does- It does comply with our section of our land development code 20603 and 2.0505, all the criteria. Mr. Hoover will have a detailed staff report, will summarize some of those criteria that we meet, and followed by the applicant also does have a presentation for this project. So with that, Mr. Hoover will do his presentation.
Mr. Hoover? Good evening, mayor, council members, and the public. Bill Hoover from Community Development. Secure Place is a petition and it's requesting to rezone 23 1/3 acres located on the west side of Old Kings Road. It's about a half mile north of the intersection between Town Center Boulevard and Old Kings Road. The property owner wants to rezone the property from general office, also known as Office Two, to general commercial, which is also known as COM2, in order to develop a self-storage facility. Since the COM2 zoning district only allows self-storage facilities with approval of a special exception, the property owner has also applied for a special exception petition. This is the future land use map. The subject property and almost all the lands along Old Kings Road are designated mixed use, which is shown in red. To the east of Old Kings Road, you'll see some bright yellow area. That's designated residential. And the lands to the rest of that, directly to the west, are in the red also, and that's mixed use. So those residential lands, in the mixed-use lands that were developed for residential, are located east of this conservation area that's actually pretty wide, that runs up and down the east side of Old Kings Road. And so this conservation area provides an excellent buffer between the residential uses and the Old Kings Road commercial corridor. The existing zoning map is shown on the west, the left side of your screen, on the right side is what's proposed. I'd like to point out, on the right-hand side of the screen, the Office Two area that would remain, that's owned by the applicants also. That's an old burrow pit, and the site is designated as wetlands, so it's not going to really be developed. The other Office Two area is where the Gold Choice Assisted Living Facility is located. The PSP area to the north of the site, that's a burrow pit that's owned by FDOT. And if you look a little bit further to the north of that, you'll see some more public, semi-public. That land is for the FDOT truck waste station. And then there's another one on the west side of the interstate. This is the applicant's conceptual site plan, and the dark red buildings located on the east side of the site that would be closest to Old Kings Road is for 95,500 square feet of self-storage individual units in enclosed buildings. The lighter colored units on the west side of the screen that approach I-95, those are covered boat and RV storage spaces, and there would be 287 of those. So you can see that the intent here of the site plan was for the buildings for the self-storage would screen the boat and RV storages, plus the wetlands would also do that located to the north of the site. And then to the south of the site, there's additional wetlands. This is an aerial view. I would say it's more like a computer rendition showing what the facility would look like if you were above Old Kings Road in a helicopter or a light plane. So what the applicant has done is the self-storage units, a lot of those have garage doors. So this is a little bit different than a lot of the self-storage units that if we went back 20 years ago, they were made out of concrete block, they had bright red or orange doors or whatever, very cheaply built. Now, the newer units are air-conditioned, they make them look a little bit more like offices. And some of the standards that we've required on special exceptions were that the garage doors be internal to the site, they be painted in traditional Palm Coast colors, and then they be screened from any right-ofways. So the, one of the things they've done with the buildings is by placing the covered roofs are designed that they would deflect noise from I-95 rather than letting it pass through. So your typical gas station canopy has a horizontal, it's horizontal roof, and it just lets the noise pass through. With this type of design, it lets the noise be, a portion of it be blocked. These are the five review criteria from section 2.05 of the land development code. Excuse me. A, must not be in conflict with the public interest, and the general commercial zoning district is one of the allowed zoning districts permitted in the mixed-use areas on the comprehensive plan, and staff's professional opinion will be compatible with other uses allowed on neighboring properties. B, needs to be consistent with both the comprehensive plan and the land development code. The rezoning does meet three goals, policies or objectives of the comprehensive plan, and then as it proceeds to the site plan stage, it would need to meet all the requirements of the land development code. C, must not impose a significant liability or hardship on the city. In this case, public facilities such as water and sewer are already available to serve the site, and the proposed project's traffic will only add 32 PM peak hour trips. That's very low number for a commercial-type use. To give it in comparison, a house will generate about one PM peak hour trip per single-family unit, so equivalent of about 30 to 32 homes. D, must not create unreasonable hazard or nuisance.
I'll just stop you for a second there, please. As you know, there's an assisted living property, go further down. In any way, shape, or form, will this create any noise pollution or anything that would affect the people in that?
No. Storage facilities, I mean, that's probably one of the quietest uses you can have. You know, there's not a whole lot of people there. People, you know, it's self-storage, there's nobody working there. It's probably one of the most compatible uses that you probably could have next to an assisted living facility, in my opinion, it would be. And it's common, I think the applicant, you know, will do a presentation following us, and I believe they also have part of their assisted living facilities adjacent to storage facilities that we have seen as well.
95 is right there. Go ahead, Mr. Hoover.
D, must not create an unreasonable hazard or nuisance. The rezoning will be compatible with the overall neighborhood as it is located along a commercial corridor and then is separated by the residential land uses to the east by a large conservation area. E, must comply with all applicable government standards. If the project is approved by the city council, then it would move forward to the technical site plan stage, and at that point, it would need to meet water management district and all our land development code and DEP standards. We did have a public meeting on this for all neighbors within 300 feet. It's actually the applicant does the meeting, we just sort of tag along and also review to make sure that the stuff is mailed out and it's done properly. The meeting was held at 5:30 PM on December 8th at the community center. There were 18 members of the public there, as well as the applicant had several people there, as well as two city staff members. Two signs were put up along Old Kings Road, and then before each public hearing, there's been a news ad run about 15 days prior. And staff has received, when this was prepared, five emails and several phone calls. I have seen a petition came in on this earlier this afternoon that I did see that will probably get brought out later. The planning board held a meeting on this on December 15th. Six persons spoke against this rezoning, and one person spoke for it. The planning board found it in compliance with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval of the rezoning by a 6-0 vote.
Excuse me?
The planning, yes?
What were their concerns? Did they say why they didn't want this?
Concerns ranged from noise from the interstate, the residents, the concerns came almost entirely from the residential neighborhood in Tuscana and Hidden Lakes. Concerns ranged from traffic, the noise, aesthetics of the project, and a lot of it was the, they're saying self-storage is not needed.
Now, because these are going to be a couple walls, this would create a noise barrier, no? Better than?
The applicant has done some studies on that, and they will bring forth what their experts have said tonight.
Now, I recently bought a boat, and we talked to all the boaters, and there's a huge demand for parking for boats here. It's actually, there is no space for it. There's all backed up by months of waiting lists, so just to throw it out there.
Mr. Hoover?
The planning board also reviewed the applicant's special exception for the self-storage facility, and they approved it by a 6-0 vote, and it's conditioned upon the city council approving this rezoning. Now, in that special exception, there's some advantages that makes staff's life a little bit easier and actually ensures some things for the neighborhood. And some of the, I think we placed about eight or nine conditions on there that the applicant agreed to, and things were like, you can't go in this self-storage facility and open a business and start renting out, let's say, U-Haul vehicles, or boats, or let's say, construction equipment, so things like that. Additionally, we put conditions on here that it's only for boats, RVs, if you've got an antique car, you want to store it there, or a pickup truck, no problem. Once you get into things like dump trucks, large construction vehicles, it absolutely would be prohibited.
So, Mr. Hoover, you opened up the book, so you might as well share the rest of the conditions that you placed. Those are two. You said there were half a dozen conditions placed on it?
Oh.
Sorry, but...
Yeah, well, another one is there's no signage.
No road signage, you mean?
Well, there'll be signage for the project, but not the individual businesses. Another one was the, you're not allowed to live in the RVs, which...
Got to be thorough.
We tend to be conservative on there because, you know, as you know, RVs, they're allowed to stay at many Walmarts across the country, and actually Cracker Barrels, so we...
So it's not a campground?
Yeah, so if somebody has an issue there. Another one was, I think you wouldn't be allowed to live in any of the self-storage units. Another one is you would not be allowed to have a business in there. So when I worked for the, in Collier County, we had a lot of issues with these. So learning from my planning experience many years ago, we were able to incorporate some of these things that created problems. So we had people, businesses, because it was expensive to rent and start up a business, they would go to the self-storage facilities and open a business, and they might be selling, let's say, cowboy boots. And so you got pretty low overhead because it's just designed to be a self-storage facility with air conditioning. So that's the kind of things that we've done and put in here to minimize the impact so that this would stay and be a good neighbor for the long term.
Thank you, I appreciate the detail.
What would happen next, there would be a second hearing on this, which would be the adoption hearing, and then the neighbor, the applicant comply for a technical site plan. Because it's over 40,000 square feet of buildings, it would go to the planning board for approval of the technical site plan. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Board recommended approval to city council of Secure Space Application Number 4901 to rezone 23.33 acres from the general office to the general commercial zoning district. And the applicant's team is here, and they do have a PowerPoint presentation that should be fairly detailed.
And the PLDRB, it was unanimous in their vote?
6-0, yes. And mayor, as Mr. Hoover's putting up their presentation, I just want to reiterate that this is for a rezoning. It's a little bit unique that we got into a little bit more detail about the special exception, but I think it illustrates with the applicant, you know, they could have came in for, you know, a more high-intensity commercial rezoning, like a COM3, but they opted to go to commercial two, a more or less intense rezoning, and to go at the same time with a special exception to the planning board, so that the residents and staff have some reasonable assurances, and I have Mr. Hoover illustrated some of the conditions that were put on there, to make sure that, you know, some of the concerns of the citizens have been addressed. So I just want to reiterate that before Mr. Livingston starts his presentation.
You're doing a good job introing the applicant's counsel here. Go ahead, Mr. Livingston.
Good evening. Jay Livingston here, Livingston in Sourd. I am the attorney for the landowner, OKR Investors LLC. This property is under contract with the Secure Space Company. That's a nationwide company that builds storage facilities. Before we get into the slides, because you didn't have the benefit at the planning board did, there's a little bit of a history to how this project came to be. The project, the property immediately to the south of the picture you can see on the screen is a number of lots within the same subdivision that my client owns that was, an application was submitted to rezone to DPX zoning. We were going to do a attached single-family project, a gated rental community essentially. And we took that to the planning board, and we were denied unanimously, and we heard lots of comments from the neighbors across the street about why they didn't support the project. The biggest concerns were sound and traffic. Obviously, sound is more generated off-site, but it's a legitimate concern because as those trees come down, the sound carries. The other concern was traffic because even though Old Kings Road is operating at an acceptable level of service under your comprehensive plan, we all know that Town Center Boulevard, the interchange there, needs some improvements with turn lanes and signalization changes that results in some backlog. I mean, I'm sure anybody that's driven down there at the wrong time of day has been caught in a couple light cycles, I have. And so that's another legitimate concern that was raised. And then the third biggest concern was compatibility, you know, a residential use on those lots. So instead of bringing that before you with the denial, we went back to the planning board, to the planning table internally to determine, you know... to determine, you know, what what use we could get out of it. Unfortunately, those lots, although they're big enough for a storage facility, it's about twenty acres to the south, um they're they're pushed up against the road and and screening would be ve- very difficult. So, we started looking at Lot Six and then Lot Five B, which is um the remaining portion of Lot Five that was split for the A L F, is 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 predominantly a wetland and would stay natural except for a retention pond that would overlap that line, which is why it's part of this application. Went back and we decided how we could plan this. Uh we started working with the Secure Space Group and um we designed this project to address as many of the concerns that the neighbors had brought up during that previous application. And as you'll see in our presentations, we get further along, um you know, most secure faci- most storage facilities these days are are actually built to look like, as Mr. Hoover said, an office building, but they're built, you know, two, three stories high. Um and the problem here is although that would work on this lot, it would also work on the lots to the south, it also opens up a lot of open space. It it opens up the sound corridors. And so, the site plan that you saw, and you'll see some more details in this project, as well as some of the other projects that this group, Secure Space, does that um that are two and three stories tall, is we spread out the storage facility across the entire lot, walled in the front. Um the portion on the north end of Lot Six is actually staying natural. It's 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 predominantly wetland, but that's staying natural, which creates an additional screen. And then we had the benefit that when this plat was originally done, um the the commercial plat was done with the requirement of shared driveways between lots. So, we'll actually be sharing the existing driveway for the A L F. So, the actual primary entranceway to the facility is off Old Kings Road, internal to that driveway. Um and that allows us to make sure those walls in the front are not, there's no break. Um that
Excuse me, are you gonna leave any trees on the northern part of Lot Six?
Uh yes, on the north, on this, on the northeastern part, that will remain untouched and you'll see that in the site plan when we get a little further along in this in this in the site plan. Um there are, there is the clearing um to allow us to spread it out. Um that creates the um the area for the outdoor parking, which is gonna have those those angled roofs, which creates a baffle effect for the sound. And we'll get into more of that in that uh in in the slides. But that was the history of this. We we really designed this project um as a way to make sure that it was not intrusive to the neighbors. Um um you'll 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 most likely hear objections from the from the public during this 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 presentation and and, you know, one of the primary objections that was raised was that, you know, this is a residential area and and that's just simply not true. Um this corridor has been designated mixed-use since the comprehensive plan was adopted, or at least the future land use map of the comprehensive plan was adopted. Um the 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 map that Mr. Hoover showed you with the yellow and the red, that those red areas have been mixed-use from the inception of the city's land use planning. Obviously, in the very beginning of the city, we we still operated under the county's code and comprehensive plan, but when that was adopted, um it was mixed-use. Um just to make sure that I didn't misremember, I went back and looked at the ordinances and the original official zoning map, which was ordinance two thousand five forty-six, um adopted the zoning that you see here. So, you have COM two to the south, which is what we're proposing here. So, essentially just connecting another COM COM two zoning to the existing COM two lots to the south. You have, there's a break because of the F D O T pond to the north. And then, north of that, you have COM three, immediately across the street, actually directly across the the preservation area from um from the Tuscana portion, the Hidden Lakes Phase Two plat, is COM two and multifamily two, um all consistent with the mixed-use designation. Um so, this has always been designed as a mixed-use corridor with both medium and high-intensity commercial uses. Um to the north, for example, the COM three, those could be, a storage facility could be built there as a matter of right, without a special exception. Um unfortunately, if we if that was developed there because of the narrowness of that land, and you'll see that in a later slide, it would be almost impossible to screen it the way that this lot allows us. I mean, this lot really is an ideal location for this use because it allows us not only to screen the storage use, but also to mitigate the sound. Um and the other objection that you'll likely hear is that this isn't compatible, you know, storage is incompatible. And I, you know, that that piqued my interest, so I looked at 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 existing uses in the city and um, you know, the Cube Smart self-storage facility on the on Pine Lakes Par- Parkway, nor- the north Pine Lakes Parkway, eleven Pine- Pine Lakes Parkway North is where it's located. That's a directly across the street from a residential neighborhood, um without any buffer, just the street buffer and the setback off the right-of-way. Um the extra-space storage, it's on Palm Coast Parkway, forty-eight sixty Palm Coast Parkway, is right in front of single-family uses right along the Parkway. Flagler toy storage, which I'm sure you're familiar with, which is on Colbert, that's directly in front of si- single-family uses. And I think the best example in terms of, you know, kinda comparable use, because it it it's a real modern storage concept, is the most recently designed um extra-space storage that's on twenty-two Commerce Boulevard. That's immediately across the street from single-family houses. I drove by it on my way here tonight. And um and that is a really good example of what could've been built and also the type of design concepts that are going into this project, which is to look more like an office. I'm sure you're familiar with that project and it's a real gorgeous project. You really can't tell it's storage. Um and that's really the trend in the industry is to build projects that way, so you don't get that kind of industrial flex warehouse type of feel with your storage facilities. So, with that, we'll move on to the presentation, but you know, that history is important because this project, whether the 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 neighbors are satisfied or happy with the project or not, we really did design this project with all the comments we heard with that prior project in mind. So, um this is the the lot. Um Lot Five B is not really outlined, but the green space to the south, it's just um west of the of the um A L F site, which is the cleared area. That is um also part of the application. Okay, so, here's a map that shows the current zoning. So, um as you can see, um the red to the south over the A L F site, that little trapezoid shape, that's all COM two, that's existing COM two. That's the proposed zoning that we wanna change this particular lot to. Um this is what the proposed zoning would look like, um my best effort at matching colors. So, you'll see that we're just essentially conforming it to those lots in the south that are already in existence. That zoning's already in place and has been since the two thousand five ordinance. Um I I put this map up here to show you, this is the mixed-use. This is similar to what Mr. Hoover showed you. This shows you the mixed-use district that that um allows for this type of zoning, the compatibility of this type of zoning. It shows you the mixed-use actually carries on both sides of Old Kings Road. It's not residential on one side, mixed-use on the other. It's mixed-use and then residential tucked further back where the Hidden Lakes and Tuscana projects are. Um this is a little blow-up to show you a little bit more of what's allowed in the area to to demonstrate the the commercial nature, the or a hi- or higher density residential nature of the corridor. So, you have um right where the canal is, where Town Center is, to the north, you have the COM two zoning, um the office two zoning that we're requesting to change. Um immediately in the north of that, you have COM three zoning. Um and in fact, that little red piece that's on the east side of Old Kings Road is our is already COM two. That's directly adjacent to um the Hidden Lakes Phase Two plat, or what's known as Tuscana. Um then, just to the north of that, the brown is M F R two. So, that's the general uh zoning layout for this project.
I just have a quick question for Steph.
Yes, please.
Uh will the location of this place will have anything, will impede in any way, shape or form the widening of uh Old Kings Road possibly in the future?
Well, um it it won't necessitate the the widening um with with the trips, but it would contribute uh to the special assessment district because Old Kings Road is a special assessment district. So, this project would actually contribute to the district to help widen the road.
But logistically, doesn't impede upon the widening of Old Kings, correct? Uh if Old Kings were to be widened, it wouldn't overlap with these with this project?
Oh, right. No, we we, when they come in for a site plan, that's a great question. We we have uh some plans that uh we make sure that we have the right-of-way to to extend Old Kings Road.
Yeah, and and that's a right, that's an excellent question, Councilman Barranquino. Um actually, um this this landowner or the predecessor to this landowner, and one of the principals of the current landowner, backed from when it was originally platted, um has already contributed right-of-way and easements to accommodate the Phase Two of Old Kings Road. So, if you go to the property's website and, you know, you click on the little parcels, you'll see some sliver parcels right along Old Kings Road. And if you track the deeds back, those were actually previously conveyed by the landowner to the city in order to accommodate the road project. So, you have right-of-way that you've acquired, you have easements for utilities that you've acquired. This landowner's been paying their special assessments since the special assessment uh district was formed. Um and um they've also been paying taxes on these lots since they were platted at at the commercial, vacant commercial rate. So, um the the right-of-way that you require for the the sixty percent um plan for Phase Two of Old Kings Road have already been have already been given.
And had they go with the office buildings, you'd have a lot more traffic than-
Yes, sir. And tha- and that's what this slide is 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 designed to demonstrate. So, any use that's within OFC two, COM two and OFC two are really interesting zoning districts because they almost completely overlap. Um all of the uses that are allowed in COM in Office two are allowed in COM two. And then, COM two obviously expands that. Now, we're not asking for that expansion except for the storage facility. We already have a special exception approved and if the city council chooses to approve the rezoning, we would um record that development order and be stuck with a special exception for a storage. So, the remaining uses become, you know, irrelevant to the to the question of what will be built there. Had we gone with Office two or any of the office uses permitted in COM two, we would be um dealing with a forty percent uh max area ratio, up to three hundred and twenty-three thousand square foot building size, up to a hundred-foot building height. Um as you know, with an office building, you have um usually, the office building is sited somewhere in the kinda middle of the property. You have parking lots around it that would open up the sound corridors and create a sound problem. Um and you would also, at that at that kind of use, you would have um um a much more intensive trip generation from for vehicles. And we actually have a representative from our team who can speak to that, because I'm not a traffic engineer.
So, thank you for having me here this evening, folks. Uh, you know, Jay gave a great introduction of this is a very low-intensity use. So, as we look at-
Would you just introduce yourself for the record, please?
My apologies. My name is Tyler Malberg. I am a graduate of University of Florida. I worked for about nine years at Florida Department of Transportation. Um I managed both construction and design projects while I was there. I have been five years at New Kirk Engineering. I'm one of the owners of the company here. And um so, my specialty area, I'm running our design group and transportation services group. The key that I really wanna focus on is that we have a whole wide range of ways that we estimate traffic. We actually have the Institute of Traffic Engineers has eleven editions of the manual for trip generation. Every year, it gets refined. We look at how uses were merged together and split them out further and further and further. In each edition, the mini warehouse use has been separated further from the industrial warehousing. We've seen decreases in our trip predictions. Florida typically around this time is under-delivering trips by about twenty percent. So, we're s- from I T E, we generate thirty-two peak-hour trips. That is actually eighteen cars leaving, fourteen cars entering the facility. And then, you know, we can expect that that number is actually a conservative estimate. When we look at any other use, an office building, whether it's medical offices, professional offices of any kind, you're gonna have more than twenty staff members. You're gonna have a lot more people coming and going throughout the day that are customers. There is no lower intensity use that you can have for a a commercial type of zoning than what you're gonna see with storage facilities. One of the other benefits that you get is speaking to the sound effects. Um one of the great things I got exposed to at F D O P was the sound debatement programs and sound walls and how it basically works. And, you know, trees, I I had always thought are this great buffer. You can't see through them, but really, you can hear cars coming through the trees pretty well. And sound walls do a much better job. And it's something that D O T found pretty quickly, Federal Highway found pretty quickly. And they do two to three times as good of a job to have a thirteen-foot sound wall versus, you know, fifty, seventy-five feet of trees. So, in this case, the way that the roofs are shaped is actually a technique that's used in a lot of outdoor shooting ranges nowadays. You wanna suppress the noise towards the ground, contain it within your sight. It kinda bounces around, but it doesn't really exit. If it does exit, it's in a vertically upward way and by the time it disperses.
How how tall are usually those sound uh walls that they put along the-
They're about fourteen feet. They're thirteen foot six inches.
So, it's almost the same.
Yeah, so it's, so the the technique that's being used, and and they range anywhere from eight to sixteen, but most of them are precast in fourteen-foot size. So, what we're seeing here are, you know, design techniques that are actually very sophisticated from the architecture firm to use a slanted roof that's going to capture the noise downward. It's a facility type that generates the lowest level of traffic that we can generate with any type of improvement on the property. And what we're seeing in a P M peak-hour um addition, the fourteen trips into the driveway, it's gonna be about seven cars coming southbound, seven cars going northbound. So, roughly every nine minutes, you're gonna see somebody entering from one direction or the other. It's really a a fairly negligible impact on the overall capacity of the road. Any questions or? Thank you.
You have more presentation?
We do. Um I'm gonna turn it over now to David Butler. He's one of the principals of the landowner. We we, Nick Zent, who was our project architect, was supposed to be here tonight, but he's a victim of our current surge. So, um since Mr. Butler's had most of the conversation with him, I'm gonna have him walk through those slides. It shows you more about the project specifics. So, David.
Also, Jay, just to clarify, um the applicant submitted a letter from Mr. Zent-
Yes.
-before the um hearing started?
Yes.
Um would you like that entered into the record?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay.
And and Mr. Butler will address some of the comments, some of the the some of the contents of that letter.
Thank you. My name is, my name is David Butler. Uh I live in Winter Park, Florida. I've been a property owner and developer in Palm Coast since two thousand and five. I'm responsible for bringing you the Panera, the Hilton Garden Inn, what is now Chipotle, and the infamous, famous Regent Bank lot on the corner that has been on the corner as a bank lot for many years. Uh my development history is over two and a half million square foot of uh suburban, but mostly urban core high-rise office development. I have owned an architecture company. We have employed A I A architects in the past, so I feel somewhat competent to speak to the design aspects of this project. I am of an age that I don't know how to do PowerPoint, so I'm going to ask Jay Livingston to pull up slides for us. This very first slide is very technical, but it is meant to show that this is an eleven percent floor area ratio, somewhere up there. Uh if you look closely, you will see that the uh coverage is eleven percent. And before I go to the next slide, I wanna tell you just a little bit about Insight will be building the project. Originally, I was gonna build this project myself, as I built the assisted living. I don't operate the assisted living, but I'm a landlord. I was gonna build this and find an operator. Insight came along and absolutely floored me with their competence. Um if you go to their website in your free time, insightpg.com, as in Insight Property Group, uh you will see a group of young, hard-charging people who have built over a billion dollars of self-storage in the last four years. Oh, that's it. In four years, they built one billion dollars. They have sixty-four projects. And when you look at some of their projects, you're gonna see some of the most stunning architecture for self-storage that I have seen anywhere in the country. And I pay close attention to architecture, given my development background. With that said, I'm gonna ask that we go to the next slide, please, Jay. This is the overview. You've seen it before. But what is unique about this? This was my original design expanded on by uh Insight. But my design was meant to put all of the RV out by the freeway and to then create a solid barrier around the property as it is fronting onto Old Kings Road and to not show any of the doors of self-storage. The, this is probably our most uh impressive view of the project. This is what people will see going up and down Old Kings Road. This project is designed to mimic the mass and style of a research building that you might find up in the Research Triangle. Uh it could also be an office building, were we to use the cliche design or the design cliche of of putting some faux windows on the outside. But those are seen for what they are, which is faux windows trying to make the building look like a an office building. So, what we have done is we've retained office building mass. We've retained office building uh variation of color and texture. And we have kept the overall height of the building to thirteen foot six inches. Now, thirteen foot six inches, to put it in perspective, is about five and a half foot lower than the average home across the street in Hidden Lakes. People are gonna come and object to the mass of this project, but we have done an excellent job of keeping the building at a very reasonable height. Uh one of the things you're gonna see a little bit later is that by going with this fully-enclosed project, we've created a soundtrack. We are not responsible for any sound off I ninety-five. We didn't generate. We're responsible for the sound we generate, which is virtually nothing. However, in deference to the homeowner- However, in deference to the homeowners who spoke overwhelmingly, expressed overwhelming concern about the sound, we designed this project to mitigate what you're going to now see as sixty-eight percent of the sound energy coming off of I-95, which is not our responsibility. Next slide, please. This is an example-
Can you go back to the other slide, please, just for a second?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, hopefully this is not to scale. The reason why I'm saying this because I just mentioned before the widening, the possible of widening of Old Kings Road.
Correct.
And by looking at over here, even though I see plenty of room between the existing road and the end of the building, I see a sidewalk there. Hopefully this is not to scale, it's just to, to show us what it's going to look like.
Right. This is just the rendering of the building itself, not the road and-
It's not to scale.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Much obliged.
Councilmember Brink, you know, there is a thirty-foot additional right-of-way off the edge of the pavement. That belongs to the city already. We ourselves gave five and a half acres in, as Jay Livingston said, little slivers, a sliver here and a sliver there, but over about a three-year period, we gave five and a half acres of land to the widening of Old Kings Road.
Thank you.
Also, to answer one of your other questions about trees, we have done a full tree survey on the property. There are nineteen specimen and historic trees on lots six and five B. We will be saving fourteen of those specimen and historic trees.
Thank you.
Okay. Next slide. This is a, a view of what you'll look at when you drive down the road as you drive into the rental office. Unlike many self-storage rental offices that try to get mass, they try to go up eighteen, twenty-four feet and say, hey, here's the rental office. This is a single-story, looks like a single-story suburban office. And you'll notice that even as you're driving at this angle, you still don't see any doors and you still don't see any RVs. That's part of the design. This is intentional. Next slide. An aspect down the entry drive, which is shared with the ALF to the left, and it does dead-end. Okay, next slide, Jay. Again, the leasing office, as you can see, very modest, very subdued, natural earth-toned colors, and nothing at all that causes people to feel that this is anything other than office mass. Next slide, please. Example of secured spaces interiors. Again, these people are professionals, and this is the type of work they do. Next slide, please. Here is an aerial. We've elevated to a, we've elevated to a perspective that no one will go to unless they happen to be about twenty-five foot tall. And this shows the security gate that goes across the front, and this is the very first time you have any view whatsoever of anything that might look like self-storage. But you are now two hundred and fifty foot off of Old Kings Road. Next slide, please. I want to show you what Insight does in the way of designs of their projects to try to be compatible with upscale neighborhoods. Okay, this is in Torrance, California. It's under construction at this time. Again, meant to look like an office building, even though it is self-storage. Next slide. Another one. A little bit more of a self-storage look, but if you know Signal Hill, California, this is a very industrial area. You probably know this, Nick. It's also where they have oil wells sitting right by the freeway. That's Signal Hill. So a little bit of an industrial element in Signal Hill is, is quite in keeping. Next slide, please. Here's one that's meant to look like a four-story office building in Springfield, Virginia. Next slide. A repurposed, in Titusville, a repurposed Kmart. They've brought this project back to life. Next slide. All right. Now we're going to talk a little bit about sound. Jay, why don't we give them the first animation, please? Okay, so what you see here is the sound moving across the project. Now, if you look at the three blocks on the left, you'll see resource, or sourcing data for where we got the sound mitigation plan. The property is divided into really two different areas. The blue area is the sound baffle. The yellow area is the sound trap. Sound trap has the solid thirteen-foot-six-inch walls around it. The blue area is a baffle created by the angle parking of the RVs, and those do deflect the sound as it comes off of I-95. Eighty-five percent of the sound generated on a highway is generated by the contact of the tires on the pavement. So sound is generated low, it comes low across the property, right into the side of the RVs. Every time it hits an RV and it deflects, it loses energy. You'll notice that in the second block, and this is from the DOT itself, says that the average reduction of noise barriers is about seven decibels, and the average height is fourteen foot. Our height is thirteen foot six inches. And then you go down to the final block, and it says up at the very top that if you can get a five-decibel loss, this is a simple degree of difficulty, it reduces sixty-eight percent of the sound energy. So between the baffling and then the trapping inside of the sound barrier wall-
It does reduce the average sound by seven decibels or two-seven decibels?
No. The sound reduction can be as high as seven decibels with the wall alone.
Okay, all right.
But then the five-decibel happened to be the National Highway Institute's measurement of where you lose sound energy. So, Councilman, we believe that this will in fact reduce the sound energy leaving the property to the east by sixty-eight percent. Now, were it to be office, and there are people who are saying, we want this to be office, you would then have masked offices in the middle with wide-open sound corridors on either side, right out to Old Kings Road. Those sound corridors are in fact the parking lots. So we are, we're doing everything possible to meet and to mitigate a problem that is not of our making. Next slide, please. Here's a very interesting slide. Is there demand? That's the question. Is there demand? So Insight, these guys who are very, very intelligent, say the easiest way to measure demand is to see what the local prices are compared to neighboring prices. If the local prices are higher, clearly there's not enough supply. That's empirical. It's economics 101. So what they did is a survey of Daytona Beach, St. Augustine, Jacksonville, and Palm Coast. And you see that in those three cities, they pay an average of a hundred and seventy-three dollars for a ten-by-ten climate-controlled storage facility. In Palm Coast, we pay an average of two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Now, if you want to do the very best for the Palm Coast residents, you build as much storage as you can to drive the prices down and let the developers take the risk that they know when to stop building. This is what Insight does. They go into a high-rate area and they build a first-class facility, and then they lower the price. And you have in your letter from Insight Property Group, and I now will tell you, Nick Zent would have been here, but he got COVID. He got tested positive for COVID. He called me last night at seven-thirty and said, guess what? I can't get on an airplane. Okay? So this has been put together rather quickly, but here we are. So when we talk about demand, the very first thing that they have learned in their years, they've had, they've owned fifty-five facilities in Florida alone, is that the Florida demand is fifteen square foot of storage per person. Next slide, please. You'll see here a summary. Now, we have given you for the record the entire, you have this, the entire demand study, but it's a nine-page study. There's a lot of small detail in it. So it's been summarized on this page right here. There are forty thousand people living within the three-mile radius, and that is the demand radius for all self-storage. That gives rise to a need of six hundred and seven thousand square foot of storage based upon Insight's extensive experience. There's an existing supply in three different properties of a hundred and thirty-one thousand and change square foot, and there are two properties in the pipeline. There is Bellicita down on State Route 100, which is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot of enclosed storage. There's another amount of covered storage, outdoor storage, but that's not counted. And then this project is ninety-five thousand square foot. After both of these projects are built, there will still be a demand shortage of two hundred and fifty-one thousand square foot in the three-mile radius, given the rooftops that are in place. That doesn't include the rooftops that might be built if JX Development, the JX Property Project, which is DRI-planned for twenty-five hundred homes, I think more recently reestimated at twelve hundred homes. If those homes are built, that's not including those, which would then further increase demand. If you look at the Insight Property Group's letter on page two, please, they talk about pricing. And they say that their business model is simple. To offer clean, safe, and affordable storage to Palm Coast, we provide storage closer to residents' homes while offering highly competitive rates and superior customer service. Insight's rates will be close to the rates in Daytona Beach and St. Augustine, being a hundred and seventy-three dollars, affording a significant savings for Palm Coast residents over the current Palm Coast rates of two hundred and sixty-two dollars. That is their written commitment on how they're going to be pricing. Had Nick Zent been here tonight, he would have told you that, but instead he sent along the letter. The economics of the project are compelling for Palm Coast. Currently, the property pays twenty-two thousand dollars a year of sales, of real estate property taxes. It developed as a self-storage facility of ninety-five thousand square foot. Looking at the other similarly sized newer buildings in Palm Coast, there will be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of real estate taxes collected. Beyond that, there will be approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of sales taxes collected on the rents. The project will generate approximately eighty construction jobs over the course of its one-year construction, and then it'll generate four jobs paying fifty-five thousand dollars a year in the management and the operations of the building. They will not build just one building in this market. They will build more, not in the Palm Coast market per se, but in the eastern Florida market. They will get other properties, and they're making a major commitment to Florida like they had when they ran a company called iStore. That's the project. That's the benefit it brings. We have given up seventy-three percent of our land use entitlements. We've given up ninety-one. We're reducing property traffic by ninety-one percent, and we believe that it is the least intense project that could possibly be planned on this property other than a cemetery, which we would not do next to our own ALF. So we thank you for your time. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Just one quick question. Any climatized rooms?
One hundred percent climate control. There will be no non-climate.
Thank you.
Any other questions from City Council members at this time?
They got everything.
Okay, does that conclude the presentation?
You're welcome.
Mr. Livingston? You done with the-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're done. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. No other questions? So I would open up for public comment at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this project? Yes, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Now's the right, now's the right time. Yeah, my name is Tom Barrett. I live at 172 Arena Lake Drive in Hidden Lakes. I'm, I'm one of the residents close to this project. One thing I would like to see, and I, I hope you would like to see, is a layout of what this project would have looked like if it was OFC Two, General Office. I didn't see that layout. I saw the layout of the proposed rezoning, the COM Tube and the, and the warehouse and all that, but they don't show a layout of what it would have been if it was, if it was a commercial office. I'd like to see that. There's a lot of neighbors who live in Hidden Lakes and other, other developments near the area, Tuscana, who are not too happy about having this change in the zoning to go to, go to commercial and warehouse space. There have been articles set around about, you know, activities, bad activities when you have warehouse space, criminal activities and things of that nature. I don't know if any of that's true, but I would have liked to have seen a layout of what it would have liked, if what it would have been if it was commercial office. I'm sure they've got it because that's what was zoned. I don't know why they didn't show it. The other thing is noise. Yeah, there's a certain amount of noise now, of course. I'd like to see somebody, you hire an engineer now, or they hire an engineer, let's go and take some noise readings now. Let's get a baseline of what the noise is from I-95 with all the foliage and trees and what have you that protect our community, and then let's take some noise readings later, if you approve this thing. And I sincerely hope you don't approve it until you see these other layouts I described and get some more information. But if you do, we ought to take some noise readings later because I don't believe that this is going to reduce noise, not for one bit. I heard the stories. I, I'm not a noise engineer. I happen to be an engineer, but I'm not a noise engineer. But I'd like to see why anybody thinks this is going to reduce noise from I-95. My thinking is, is just the reverse. So I'd like to see a baseline right now. Let's take some noise readings now to see what they are, and then we can take them later to see if they're truly going to be noise, reduce noise. So generally speaking, those are my comments. As I say, people are, there is an objection among the community to this for the reasons I mentioned, and I wish we would have seen a layout for what it would have been like under the current zoning. They chose not to show that. I'm not sure why, but maybe they'll show it if you don't approve it, maybe they'll come back and show it next time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to come? Yes, sir. Good.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. How ma, if the city approves this new storage facility, how many storage facilities will we have in Palm Coast? Because about sixteen months ago, the sitting mayor passed a, an ordinance or a proclamation that there be no more dollar stores. Well, I don't know how many dollar stores there are, but obviously that was enough. But how many more storage places are we going to have in the city of Palm Coast, or what number does this make?
Mr. Tyner, did you have a slide or-
I think they had a slide. The red ones, Jay? Got twelve, sixteen, seventeen?
Well, according to the, I don't want to interrupt this public comment.
Right.
Wait till we're done and I'll come back and address that question.
Go ahead. Do it, do it, do it now.
Okay. Um, and David, if I say anything wrong because you went over this with Nick and I didn't, but as was explained, Mr. Butler, with the storage facilities that are proposed within the three-mile demand area, even when those are constructed, there'll still be a two hundred and fifty-one thousand and change square footage, um, um, demand still-
So do you know a number of actual facilities?
I mean, the number of facilities with the number of dots on the screen, um-
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay.
Seventeen, yeah.
Thank you.
Seventeen.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. McDonald?
I guess the other part of my question is then how many dollar stores do we have? We stopped building dollar stores.
I'm not sure, okay. I'm not sure that's, that's relevant to this discussion. So the question is how many storage facility units exist plus the ones that are in the pipeline? I think the answer was, was seventeen. Are there additional comments from the public at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Gagan. I live at Hidden Lakes. I've owned a house here in Palm Coast for, well, four years next month. I'll be less than three minutes. This isn't a subject that I have chosen to dance on the rooftops about either nay, yea or nay. I've owned three boats from twenty-one feet to forty-eight feet. Each of those boats that I bought new, the dealership said, whatever you do, don't store your boat. Keep it at or close to the water because once you start storing it, you won't use it much anymore and you'll just pay for storage. So that changed when I moved to Minneapolis, had a boat on the Mississippi River, and that had to come out if I wanted non-hull damage in the wintertime. that had to come out if I wanted non-hull damage in the wintertime. So that violated my own policy. My view, and thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for being willing to listen, is that Palm Coast, really to the point made by this gentleman, really needs phone booths more than it needs storage facilities, based on the 17 or 18. I drove around, including the site of this proposed development, and I walked in the woods over there, adjacent to I-95, and I wanted to get a sense of the neighborhood. And so I did my own site survey, and I kind of scratched my head. One gentleman said, this is mixed use. Yes, it is mixed use, but this site is also office too. So maybe we should keep it office too, because my observation in Palm Coast is, we need sprouts, we need Trader Joe's, we need really good Asian takeout, we need fine dining, but most importantly, we need employers. And one gentleman here said, this will employ nobody, and my research indicated very firmly through two of our researchers at my firm, that storage facilities generally employ between one-half a full-time equivalent and two-and-a-quarter full-time equivalents. So if we need employer, employers to employ people for W-2 statutory employee wages, office two would contribute to that much more noticeably. And so I would encourage, despite the fact that the planning board approved this, even though during the December 15th meeting, there was only one speaker in favor of it and six against, I would enjoy and recommend deep thought about whether we really need a second new storage facility on Old Kings Road as you drive north from Movie Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Additional speakers at this time?
My name's Derek Dieter. I'm the owner of Gold Choice Assisted Living. Would be a shared driveway with this project, and just wanted to talk, I've been in the business for 25 years, and I operate multiple facilities throughout the state of Florida, and I happen to own and operate three Gold Choice facilities, one here in Palm Coast and two in Volusia County. And both of those properties in Volusia County, one of them actually adjoins a self-storage facility, and the other one adjoins office spaces. And I wanted to just speak a little bit to the compatibility of those spaces and the problems that I have with my facility in Ormond, who it adjoins office space. And I just put down some notes. So in Ormond Beach, the traffic generated by the office space causes immediate problems with EMS ingress and egress to the parcel. We have delivery trucks throughout the day, traffic surges in and out for lunch, we can't find parking for our residents, families to come visit, the space is blocked for 911 calls. It's just a constant problem. In Deltona, I am part of the same parcel with self-storage. I don't even know they exist. Okay, there is zero noise, there is zero disruption, and I can't think of a better neighbor to support the assisted living project than the low impact of the self-storage. And so these are, these are projects that I currently own and operate, and it just so happens, they both have the competing zoning. And so, you know, based upon that, I am the neighbor that is most affected. I share the driveway, and I would, I would love to see this zoned for the self-storage, just to make sure that the traffic isn't increased to accommodate all of that square footage and cause additional problems of ingress egress to that property. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Are there additional comments at this time?
I'm Jim Muskoff, Hidden Lakes. At the planning board meeting, I brought up the issue about the, not an issue about whether it should be there or not, but an issue about entrance on and off of Old Kings Road from this facility. The gentleman just got up with the assisted living, he's going to share the driveway. I've been by there a few times now, and there's an island right in the middle of that road. The planning board took that into consideration, was going to have somebody check on that, fire and rescue, whatever, as far as entrance into that facility goes. If you get a big 40-foot motor coach, I've had them before, going in and out of that facility, out with the existing road like it is now with an island in the center, you're going to have a hard time not going over into the southbound lane, turning right, or the northbound lane, turning right out of there, or going northbound, it's hard to get out there. If you come from the north, going south, turning into that facility, there's an island, if you have a big enough rig, there's an island right there. So the gentleman that just spoke says they're going to share a driveway. I just want to know if the developer or him can come up and tell us what they're going to do to that road so that it looks, so they can get easy access in and out of there for large RVs, because it doesn't look to me like you can do that without backing up and going out. You can see the tire marks going out of the assisted living right now, where trucks have had the tire marks over on the dirt there to get out into that road without coming into oncoming traffic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Does the applicant respond to that question?
We've worked with our design engineers, New Kirk Engineering, and we are widening the turning radius, we are increasing the turning radius to the south. We are also adding a, called a taper lane, which is a transition lane, which allows a vehicle to leave the self-storage, remain off of the roadway, and accelerate to roadway speed before it blends into the southbound traffic. Coming from the north, we are putting in another taper lane, and this will allow cars to pull off of the existing Old Kings Road and decelerate before making their turn into the property. If need be, the island will be cut back. If need be, the island will be shortened in order to accommodate fire. This will all be part of the Tier Two technical site plan, and we will comply with all the city's ordinances, and we will comply with all the requirements of city agencies and public safety departments as required.
Mayor, I'm just going to add to that. Mr. Butler's correct. When they come in for a technical site plan, we will require a radial study, and we actually use our largest ladder truck to make sure that that can get in and out.
So the gentleman's comment will be, will be looked at at that time?
Absolutely. We do that on our site plan.
At this time, are there any additional comments from the public regarding this matter? Yes, sir.
I live in Hidden Lakes. I don't have a problem with the storage facility, but what I have a problem with is exceptions. I'm assuming the exception in this case is being pushed for the storage of boats and RVs, correct?
Mr. Tyner, or Mr. Hoover, can you just define the exception?
Yeah. Actually, in our code on different classifications, we have what we call a special exception. It's utilized by light, we have a special exception for storage facilities within our COM2 zoning district, and what that means, it goes through the planning board, has to follow specific criteria, and the planning board and staff could put on special conditions for those special conditions to make it more compatible with the surrounding area.
So it's, it's not, it's not what's stored, it's the storage facility itself?
Right. That is a special exception.
That's the exception.
And Mag, I'm sorry.
The title of it. It goes through a special process, an extra layer process.
Well, from my understanding from reading the zoning things, you don't need a special exception for a storage facility, but once you have a special exception, it allows for all kinds of businesses to go in there that are, I adamantly oppose, because it'll produce increased crime, depending on the business, increased traffic, depending on the business, increased noise, increased costs to the sheriff's department and the fire department, and decreased property values in Hidden Lakes, Lakes and Tuscana.
So, Mr. Tyner, I think the question is, I'm not sure what the question is.
This is an explicit exception to allow self-storage on COM2.
It is. I mean, if this, if this is approved and the special exception is implemented, that this is what it can be. It can't be businesses, it has to be kind of what the applicant has intended.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Hoover went through the conditions, one of them being that businesses could not operate within the storage site itself, and there were several other conditions as well.
I guess that's a matter of trust.
Well, it's a matter of law.
Okay, well.
That's why we're here, yep.
Okay. And I might add, I'm a voting resident.
Okay, thank you. Next, next comment, please?
I'm Tony Petoniac. I live at 57 Arena Lake Drive. To be honest, I think, I believe that from their first go around and their first presentation many months ago, what they wanted to build in that area, they've listened to a lot of the residents worried about the sound and the traffic. As a concerned resident, I do worry about the traffic. I live in Hidden Lakes. What I worry about is they're going to have a right-hand turn lane coming into the place. I'd like to see them, we talked about it at the presentation, a left-hand turn lane into the place. I know we're going to be widening King Road and additional lanes, but if you live on, off of King Road, just to make a left there, you got to turn your blinker on a mile behind, because if not, you'll have the car pile up behind you, and traffic flies up and down King Road. But I think they should look into looking into installing a left-hand turn lane into the facility. I know they're going to have the easement lane coming out, right turn lane coming in, but to make a left-hand turn from Center Road coming to the north, that traffic, the people fly on that road. I just worry about campers and trucks and boats being pulling into there and getting rammed in behind. It's hard enough for us pulling out of our subdivision now, but just keep that a note. We talked about it before, and, but I'd like to see a left-hand turn lane to come into that facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any additional members of the public? Yes, sir.
My name is Sam Hobbs. I live in the Hidden Lakes subdivision. I've got a series of comments, but let me start by wishing you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That actually is relevant to my comments. This has been a period of time that this subject has come up about getting the zoning changes, that has actually probably made it rather inconvenient for most of the residents who have other plans for the holidays to actually become involved. Nevertheless, there has been considerable opposition. I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about noise. I just concluded, and I'm now retired from 42 years as a professional engineer. I do think there's probably a good bit more uncertainty about both the noise and the traffic than has been represented. I think the applicant and the applicant's attorney present a very rosy picture. I don't begrudge them presenting that picture, but I, in my experience as a professional engineer, one of the things I had to do was to make presentations to commissions who had to look at what their staff said, as well as what applicants said, and had to take a very skeptical point of view to assure that things were environmentally sound and safe. And I would really encourage all of you to do that. I don't think that the storage facility is in keeping with the local thing, with the character of the local neighborhood. I have a serious question as to why the applicant did not choose to consider the zoning prior to coming up with development plans. That could have avoided a good bit of this problem. And so the Tuscana exit, which is also used a good bit by Hidden Lakes, is nearly directly across from the entrance to the proposed storage facility, so that the traffic is going to be exacerbated in significant ways, in addition, just to increase of traffic, but is also going to be a potential influence with the interaction with that entrance. And so the comment has been made that there is, that the conservation area represents a very wide space. I would recommend that any of you who are, would like to assess that, to go out and take a look. It is not particularly a wide space. So that would conclude my comments. I really appreciate the opportunity to have spoken to you this week.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make comment at this time?
My name is Mary Alice Brant, and I live in Hidden Lakes, and I just wanted to say that this development is very nice. However, I do not think you should change the zone to accommodate that. I mean, we do already have a zoning there that's in place, and I don't think you should change the zone to allow this, especially if it needs a special exception. I have something I've written here, and I think I'll read part of it. I just really don't want to be redundant, but I want to express my strong opinion and opposition to the proposed rezoning on Old Kings Road to allow this business. Many residents of Hidden Lakes and Tuscana Development are completely opposed to it. We have many concerns about a very large building bringing untold amounts of only, not only cars, but travel trailers with cars attached on the back, boats of all sizes, moving vans and other trucks that would be utilizing this facility. Why rezone this road to allow so much more impact on the neighborhood that is not for the most, that is most, for the most part residential? It may be a commercial thruway, but it's already zoned, and I think you should keep it that way. I mean, we know we're going to get something, you're going to get your revenue from whatever is built there, so just leave it the way it is, and don't give these people a rezone or a special exemption. I don't understand why you would even do it. During the rush hour evening, there's a lot of traffic issues right now. In general, the, the area traffic is continuing to increase, as I'm sure you all know, and heavy traffic is already common at many times. And lastly, there is absolutely no great need for this type of storage facility. We may have a lot now, and I think there's more proposed, and it's a lovely facility, but like I said, just not there. Don't give them what they want. There's other places they could build, or build something else. Why does it have to be that? It's not pleasing to us, it's not pleasing to many of the people who live there, most of them, and you have a petition that was signed by over 800 people saying the exact same thing. The zone that's now in place should stay in place and not be changed, but the facility, to build a facility that is not needed and will create problems, not to mention the effect on our property values on residential homes in Hidden Lakes and Tuscana. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Any additional speakers like to make a public comment at this time?
I was up here last time. I live in Hidden Lakes. I've been in sales residential and new construction for over 30 years. I had prepared opposition to this development, and then when they presented their plan, I do have a question. to this development, and then when they presented their plan, I do have a question. He says that the roofs will reduce the noise on the storage facility. Do you know what the roofs are gonna be made out of? He says he has a noise reduction...
I think it actually is noise reflection.
Yeah, what I was speaking to is the reflection.
Reflection.
The shape of the structure itself and how it would capture...
What is the roof gonna be made out of? What's gonna cover the RV and the boats? What's the roof gonna be made out of?
It'll be a metal roof.
Thank you. Could you do research on that? When you take the trees out, the noise will bounce off the metal roof. All the rain, the noise from 95, bounces off the roof and goes straight across the street. There's no conservation area blocking residential there. It's about thirty feet of trees, and he's taken out over twenty-three acres of trees. So, that's for the noise part. There's no research. There's no study. When I went online, that could show that you can make a roof reduce noise from 95. The only way you can do it is with the wall, and that's why you'll see on, sometimes on highways, they'll have thick cement walls. That's that point. We got two minutes. I would also say, I have a storage facility. I've had four of them in Palm Coast. I'm down to one, thank you very much, and it's a hundred and sixty dollars a month, and I know the cost of them for the past four years. There's plenty of affordable housing. He will charge what the market bears. We have seventeen of them coming in, and they'll all be going low just so they can stay full. The fact that you brought up that they have a waiting list for boats doesn't mean we should keep building storage units for people to put their boats. I disagree. They knew that when they moved here, that they'd have to trailer them in, just like everybody else. We have a boat. Try to park a boat, an RV, a trailer. Try to go around those curves, come down King's Road, go to Town Center Boulevard and take a right. Have you done that in a truck? 'Cause I've done it in a truck and a trailer and a boat. Have you done that? Do you know what that's gonna do to King's Road? I mean, think ten years from now, what that's gonna do. Two-hundred-and-eighty-seven units. That's two cars per unit. That's over six-hundred cars. That's not seven going south and seven going north. It's seasonal. It's people going in and out of there all day long. Christmas decorations, clothing, whatever. He's got, he says these are his studies. I'd like to see him. I'd like to see the noise study. I'd like to see the traffic study. I'd like to see how Mr. Barrett brought up, our noise right now is reduced. We bought over there to keep it commercial. Mr. Cloughus, we're in your district. We were excited about tech. We're excited about jobs. We're excited about offices. Why not complement the memory center? Why not bring in physical therapy, tech offices, some kind of, something that can complement the memory center and impose on it? And then, real quick, in closing, I'd also like to say, newspaper circulation, it's at an all-time low. Twenty million, sixty-six million ten years ago, so they didn't get this in the newspaper. And then, I would also like to say, we know that the zoning board before us said that they needed the money to widen King's Road. We understand that. We want that to happen, but we wanna be smart about it, and I think that we can, and this is our opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. You said there's one more speaker?
Good evening. My name is Darlene Shelley. I live in Hidden Lakes, and we're here tonight to express our strong opposition to applications 4901 and 4902 proposing a change in the zoning from OFC-2 to COM2 and a special exception to allow for a storage facility in an area that it would not normally be permitted. There is a reason this parcel was originally zoned for office uses, as there are two large and highly desirable residential communities across the street from this location. When we purchased our home in Hidden Lakes and Tuscana, we knew this area would eventually be developed, but we were comfortable with the idea of a doctor's office, a dentist, a lawyer, a bakery, or a similar conforming use across the street. These would be businesses all the residents could utilize and enjoy. In fact, the assisted living facility that was recently constructed is a perfect conforming neighbor. It created virtually no traffic, crime, or noise, and provides a needed service not already existing in close proximity. A storage facility, however, does not belong here. Neither application defines any specific necessity, compatibility, or consistency with any of the surrounding single-family homes. There are currently at least five existing storage facilities within five miles of this parcel, and six more already under construction or approved, or pending approval. There are plenty of existing COM3 and industrial zone lots available all over Palm Coast, including State Road 100 and US-1, where this type of business is appropriate away from existing single-family homes like ours. A special exception is a process for the review of uses that would not normally be appropriate within a zoning district, but needs to ensure and promote health, safety, welfare, convenience, and comfort of the public. This proposal will in no way promote any of these key elements to quality of life, but would in fact be detrimental to all of them. The excessive noise and impervious cover from a storage facility will decimate the current peaceful conditions we enjoy here now. The traffic created by hundreds of additional oversized vehicles on a heavily traveled two-lane road in between two blind curves is not safe. Potential crime, noise, and light pollution would put the welfare of our neighbors in jeopardy and would be a huge inconvenience. The local residents do not need yet another storage facility. We have circulated a petition in opposition of this proposed zone change that we are presenting to you tonight with the signatures of eight-hundred-and-twenty-four concerned local residents. Please consider our strong opposition to abandoning the current zoning of this parcel and realize that this proposal is more greed than need. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Last call. Any additional residents, members of the public like to make comment at this time?
Thank you.
Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, come back to city council. Are there, before that, does the applicant wish to address any concerns or questions at this time, based on the last comments?
Yes, sir. I took notes. First of all, I wanted to address, and again, Jay Livingston, Livingston and Sword. There was a comment at the very beginning about why we didn't provide a layout for OFC-2, and I understand the question, but I think it shows a lack of understanding of what uses are permitted within OFC-2, because it's a very long list. This list here that I made for myself is actually a list of the uses that overlap between OFC-2 and COM2, and they go anywhere from a hospital to a liquor store to a medical and diagnostic laboratory, mail-order facilities, pharmacies, outpatient care facilities, assisted living facilities, as you know, art dealers, clothing and accessory stores, florists. It's really hard to create a layout for all of those types of uses. This is a zoning request. The layout is what is proposed, and that goes into the second thing I wanted to address, this concept about what a special exception is. Special exception is a, sometimes it's a loaded term. Another way that it's called in some other jurisdictions is a conditional use, and it essentially is a use that is permitted within the zoning district, but the city council, the planning board, staff, wherever the control kicks in, depending on the code, allows additional conditions to be imposed. We actually, when we first spoke to staff about this proposed development on this parcel, going back to the beginning of my presentation, where we were trying to figure out the best place to cite this use, 'cause we do have enough acreage to the south to do it on the COM2 that's already there, this site allowed us to address all the concerns that the neighbors had raised, as you can see in the plan. Staff actually recommended that we do COM2 as opposed to COM3, because it would allow planning board the ability to impose conditions. The concept of this not being an appropriate use for this area is just not right, is not true. The COM3 zoning district, which is just to the north, wraps all the way around to the parcel just to the north that's a pond that's not being developed. All that red that you see there across the street from the brown and across the street from the COM2 that's directly adjacent to the Tuscana neighborhood is COM3, and storage facilities would be permitted as a matter of right without a special exception. So, it's already a permitted use within this area. This particular lot is, I think, the ideal lot for the use, but it is already a permitted use within this area, not State Road 100 or other areas right to the north, right across the street from Tuscana. Mr. Butler already addressed the entrance issues, and we're open to all kinds of, whatever kind of transportation planning is required to ensure safety is, will happen in technical site plan. This use, as you saw on the slide showing the impacts, will be the minimal traffic use, as our traffic engineer specified, than any other use that we permitted. So, you know, short of not developing the property at all, we would, we are proposing use that's gonna minimize those impacts.
Mr. Livingston, may I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
So, as far as noise mitigation, can you talk about the legal requirements of the property owner requesting a rezoning for something that would remove trees and what is necessitated on their behalf for having to dampen or absorb the sound that was created by the natural barrier that was there? It's my understanding that there isn't any requirement because the noise is generated off of I-95, and that this sound barrier, as much as to the chagrin of the members in our audience, that this is going above and beyond what's legally required for development if this was to go through on a rezoning. Is that true?
That's correct, yeah. And it's a really good question, because when we proposed the DPX zoning, one of the biggest concerns, both internally as well as at the planning board, was sound, not just the impact to the neighborhood across the street, but the impact to the residents of that proposed project. The city doesn't actually, its code doesn't actually allow those types of concrete walls that you see elsewhere, so that was not, that's not an option for us, short of a land development code change. There's obviously the option of firming it, which didn't work for that project, 'cause it took up too much area. And in this particular case, again, we're not mitigating any sound we're creating. This is not a use that's gonna create any sound. It's a use that will be as quiet as any use can be, but we were trying to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors who are concerned about the loss of trees. So, yes, to answer your question directly, there is no legal requirement for us to mitigate any sound. However, we've designed the project to be as, to mitigate as much sound as possible.
And the reason I bring that up is for the members in our audience to understand that we can't decline this rezoning based upon the fact that there will be additional noise that passes from I-95 that's generated from us. In a legal setting, that would not really have any precedent to prohibit a rezoning of this nature. Is that true?
That's my understanding, and I would let your counsel weigh in on that.
Counsel?
But that is my understanding. We're not, it's not anything that this development is generating. It's not an impact created by this development.
And as much compassion as I feel for that, I just wanna clarify from a legal standpoint that if we were in a court of law and we said we are going to decline a rezoning because of the noise pass-through that's generated from I-95, whether or not we would have any footing to stand on?
Right, no. I mean, if this was a type of use that you were gonna approve, an outdoor amphitheater or something, some type of use that generates sound, there would be the ability to, the city to require sound mitigation, you know, techniques for that specified use, but this type of use hasn't been known to generate noise such as something like that, so they are under no requirement to stop any noise coming off-site.
And in a lot of cases, the walls you see along interstates are actually put in by the developer of that project for their own residence, because houses are gonna be right behind them. That's typically, not usually for off-site sound. They're actually to protect their own residents of their projects. Not, that's not always the case. That's most often the reason that they're put up.
It's funny that, I'm pretty sure that Councilman Barbosa knows what I'm gonna talk about. There's a little town called West Orange, up 278, in New Jersey, in Cedar Grove. For the first time, many, many years ago, and first and only, I was behind one of those walls, and you'd be surprised how much sound those things actually barrier. They, very little sound goes from those things. I was surprised, to be honest with you. If what you're gonna use is basically the same thing, I think you're gonna, you know, you're on the right track. And here is the part that I kind of don't understand. What would be the difference in between, excuse me, an office complex and this storage complex? An office complex that could actually build up to a hundred feet high, according to what's in here, and they will go higher than just what you're doing over there. They would go. So, you talking about buildings that you're gonna be seeing, I saw, basically, for the value of the properties, like Lady Shaw. I mean, I don't see much of a difference here, and my only worry about was safety and the sound. That was my first question to you. How will that affect an assisted living? And if that does not affect the assisted living property by the noise, by the noise created by yourself, then how can we legitimately or legally say no? That's, that's what I'm saying.
So, the eight-hundred signatures of petition, what was the petition based on? Did it say what it was?
We, the undersigned property owners in the city of Palm Coast, hereby petition the planning board and the city council to deny application 4901 to rezone from OFC-2 to COM2. It is our true belief that the rezoning does not conform or complement the residential six-hundred-plus homes located in this area of Old King's Road. There are storage facility projects both north and south of this location on Old King's Road already, approved, and a huge facility nearly completed on State Road 100. In addition, there are at least five existing storage facilities within a five-mile radius. The impact of huge RVs, moving vans, trucks, and trailers trying to turn into and out of this proposed facility will create a dangerous, unsafe, and traffic-filled nightmare on an already congested two-lane road.
Those signatures are from people from Hidden Lakes and Tuscana, or the whole city?
Um, I...
Let me, let me speak. I have been tracking this petition since I became aware of it about two weeks ago. First off, the petition is on change.org, which is feeding into Facebook. There is no requirement for anything other than your name and your email address. Ms. Shelley has been encouraging people to send it to your friends, five of your contacts, she says. Just send it to five of your contacts. Well...
All right, wait. I'll have your turn.
I actually have the screen capture page. But, all I wanna say is the following. We have no way of knowing, I've seen comments, "I'm moving to Palm Coast. I'm opposed." I've seen comments, "We should not rezone residential property to commercial." This is not right. I've seen comments from Ms. Shelley, "This is a, this is a change of the comprehensive plan." It is not. This doesn't keep with the city's vision. The city's vision is expressed in the comprehensive plan. It's codified, and it, we are within the comprehensive plan according to planning staff. I wanna address the question of safety and traffic. That's what really matters. Forget the emotion. Let's just talk about the reality. Prior to getting this project approved, we had to submit traffic studies to your planning staff. Those traffic studies were prepared by New Kirk Engineering. Mr. Malmborg has five-plus, ten-years experience designing traffic. They use the International Traffic Engineers Eleventh Edition manual. These are industry standard, engineering standard guidelines to determine the amount of traffic. So, regardless of the pictures that are being painted, the statistics are that there will be approximately one left-hand turn every twenty minutes during peak drive time. If they're really concerned about less traffic, then there's no better project than self-storage. Furthermore, if they're really concerned about, let's just talk about traffic. If it were developed as an office, there would be three-hundred-and-seventy-one peak drive trips in and out of the property versus thirty-two.
That's kind of the question I would like to ask the people from Hidden Lakes and Tuscana. I don't know if I'm allowed to, but if the developer was to bring this building that you say could be so high...
Yeah.
Are they gonna oppose that, too?
Well, currently...
So, I...
Yeah, so, Councilman, I'm not sure that's a, that's a question that, well, first of all, the applicant, I don't think, is eligible to answer the question. I don't know how you could pose that question. I mean, it's, it's an open-ended question. I mean, you could rephrase the question.
Well, I, I think, I think mostly it's not a question that the code asks you to require, and really what your job on the city council is to look at the criteria that's been presented and determine...
The evidence in front of you.
The evidence in front of you, and determine whether or not what's been presented by an expert opinion, we had a couple experts here making opinions as far as transportation goes, whether or not that supports the criteria in the code. That's really all we can look at. You know, zoning is not a public opinion matter. There is some credence to compatibility, and you wanna listen to the residents as far as that, but if compatibility can be addressed by... as that, but if compatibility can be addressed by buffering and, you know, control opaque buffers, those types of things, you know, all the things that we talked about here today, then that would address...
But Councilman, to your question, it's been presented to you, and the evidence that has been brought to you, you make your determination whether or not you feel this is a lesser or a least impact on the possibilities for the property. I think you've been presented information, and each of us will make our decision based on what we have here in front of us, if we have, if we, if we indeed agree that the impact has been lessened as a result of this request.
And this is really just a reconciliation of how compliant we feel that this project is with 2.0505 of our land development code, and whether or not it satisfies all those criteria. And I feel as a council, it's tough, because the individuals in our audience, obviously, are passionate about the reasons why they don't feel that this development should move forward, but those aren't things that are directly in conflict with our land development code. And this council, previous councils, we've almost painted ourselves into a corner. Because we've approved rezonings for this explicit use across, throughout our city with less limitations than they are asking for with the explicit exception, it really puts us in a hard place to legally be able to defend this, in my opinion, and I was just speaking from experience here. There's a reason that they're emphasizing line of sight from the neighboring residents, so they're going out of their way to ensure that in a court of law, they would not be in conflict with our land development code. They are going above and beyond in some means with the noise dampening, and, you know, that is outside of our land development code. But they are explicitly ensuring that, and there's a reason that Jay Livingston mentioned all the different self-storage units that are already approved, and, I mean, the one on Colbert is right in between two communities, and you can see it from the road. This is a situation where it may be near residential area, but it's probably by, it's probably farther away from the street, but you're not able to see it in the line of sight from the residents. So, you'd be able to argue in a court of law that this is less impactful than some of those previous things that we've approved. And I, I'm just speaking from experience here, that we can expend political capital and try to, you know, slow this down, but if we can't come to a consensus in our council on why this is going against our land development code, that we're going to have a hard time in a court of law trying to say this rezoning is not, you know, consistent with our land development code. And that stinks to say, because there's a lot of people in our audience who feel passionately about this, but at the end of the day, dealing in this capacity, that's how we have to look at it, in my opinion.
All right, Councilman, do you feel you have enough?
[inaudible]
No, 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 I'm sorry, not yet, hold on.
[inaudible]
Wait.
I'm sorry, so the time for public comment has passed.
Correct. So, let me continue. Councilman, do you feel you have, have your questions answered, you have enough information?
If I could just ask our council, that in a situation where this were to go to arbitration, just for instance, that they were arguing whether or not this should be allowed, would other instances of us rezoning parcels to be, to have self-storage installed on them, would that be brought up as evidence of, hey, you've approved it under these circumstances that are less prohibitive than what they're asking for with their special exception?
I don't know any of case law per se regarding that.
Oh, you're bringing up the point of liability, city, of course.
And our precedent, that our council has set with their previous decisions. Do we, are we setting precedent with each decision that we make to approve an explicit situation as, such as this, in a court of law? Would, would that be an arguable position? Is, is that what we're up against?
Well, I mean, I think, obviously, you can make an argument...
Sure.
...of anything, okay? But, you know, as far as precedents, and, and I don't know how much of this is on the record, so it would need to be on the record at this proceeding, first of all, because any appeals are de novo, that means they're reviewed on the record.
The subtlety of a stenographer in the...
And, right? So, if there was testimony about other self-storage facilities, and they got approved and you didn't, you know, then maybe that could be brought up for a valid argument. What I would say is this, instead of looking at that, here's the thing, if there's going to be a denial by the city council, the terms of that denial would need to include the specific reasons why you're denying it. And that, those specific reasons need to be based on the criteria of the code in sections 2.603 and 2.55. So, that, and approvals, you know, in the same respect, you need to have a reason why you're approving those, and if the staff report recommends approval, then you have those reasons. If you don't have those reasons, you need to provide those reasons, and you need to provide a why.
So, so I'll ask city council again, do you have sufficient evidence, based on the presentations this evening, to, to make your decision?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
For our clerk, the petitions that you have, are there addresses on those petitions?
Yes, there are.
And are they all within that area?
There, on each, there's a original signature with addresses, and then towards the end, there is a printout electronic version attached. The, most of the addresses I can see, I don't know all the streets that are in the area, so I'm not sure if they're all encompassed in that area. There is one listed in here in Miami, but that doesn't necessarily mean...
Miami.
So, and so, and back, and back to council's statement, so, there, there is a petition, so the presentation has been made by the community, and they have expressed, you know, their views. So, again, to each of our city council members, do you have sufficient evidence, or do you have additional questions that you might want to direct to the applicant at this time?
Can we go to the slide where the 17 units are?
Which one, sir?
The, where all the storages? So, there was a comment made that, you know, it's better to put the storage unit closer to the water, which kind of looks like this one is way closer to the water than the other ones. And there was also another person that talked about left-turning lane, but that would kind of say the same thing to Tuscana and to Hidden Lakes, there's no left-turning lane to get into there either.
So, I, I would comment, and I appreciate the comment, again, to the evidence before you and to our obligations and requirements. The design of the project is not something that we as city council people really participate in, nor certainly I don't, and I'm not sure any of us really have the expertise to, to comment on, appreciate the comment. But the, the design itself, what we're looking at are the requirements within our code. In other words, does it satisfy the code as presented by Mr. Tyner and Mr. Butler? And the planning, the PLDRB found it to do so, and I think the comment was that, that there are no issues with it conforming to the code. Again, the, the redesign and the, the conceptual aspect of the project, I'm trying to keep that away from the dais, that's really not our, our, you know, you may have expertise in, in that, but that's, that's not our responsibility. It's to, to decide whether or not it conforms to the, the community codes.
I'd just like to add, two years ago, I sold my camper. And I sold my camper because I had to drive 45 minutes to St. Augustine, because at the time, I couldn't find any place to keep it, and I certainly couldn't keep it in my driveway for more than a couple of days a week, if I was cleaning it or whatever. So, I basically got tired of driving and got rid of it. I got to tell you, I like the way this design looks, I like the less traffic, I like the fact that the assisted living group has said, "These people are going to be great neighbors." If this had been built across the street from me, I probably would have kept my camper, and I probably would have stored it in there. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Any additional discussion at this time?
None.
Mr. Butler, thank you. Okay, if no additional discussion, discussion, then I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
I'll have a motion for approval and a second. Is there any additional discussion regarding this motion at this time? Hearing none, then I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Branquino.
Yes.
Councilmember Barbosa.
No.
Councilmember Danko.
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus.
Affirmative.
Mayor Alpin.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, where are we?
We're on item number nine.
Under?
On under resolutions. Item I, resolutions?
Right.
I-9.
At number nine.
I-9.
So, if you would.
Yep. Okay, this is agenda item number I-9, a resolution of the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving application number 4871, Red Mill Point Multi-Family Master Site Plan, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. If anybody's had ex parte communications on this matter, please state that now.
No.
Okay, we'll ask the mayor when the mayor returns. Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you, city council members. Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer, this is for a application for a multi-family master site plan. It's a tier-three application, it was approved by our Planning and Land Development Regulation Board. This history of this project, a little bit, it was actually zone residential commercial when it was in the county. Back in 2005, when the city initiated its first rezoning, citywide rezoning, it was zone multi-family. Previously, there was an approved multi-family project, that site plan has expired, this is a new site plan, and Mr. Hoover will have the staff presentation. Again, it is in compliance with our land development code, section 20505 and 21004, and Mr. Hoover will provide the staff presentation and the summary of that criteria. Red Mill Point is about 35 and a half acres, and it's proposed for 216 homes. The homes are designed as two-story townhouses. However, since they would not be individually platted, the land development code defines these type of units as multi-family homes. The project will be developed over three phases, and the applicant has applied for a master site plan, tier-three, since it has over 100 homes. Site and lands to the west and southwest, in red, are mixed-use, all the area in yellow is residential. This is the zoning map, the site is multi-family residential one, that's a, one of our two multi-family zoning districts, it's less intensive than the multi-family residential two. To the west and southwest is general commercial, or COM-2, and you can see to the northwest, the north, northeast, that it's single-family residential two and single-family residential three. Directly to the east is a district you don't get to see too much of, it's States Two or Suburban Two, I believe there's two houses there on five-acre lots each. To the south is DPX or duplex zoning. This is the overall site plan, it was, I, I put some color on it so you could see a little bit better, because it's hard to show 216 units on the screen and what's really there. So, you can see Red Mill Drive is the main road that provides access to the site, it's going west, and then about the middle of the site at its entrance drive, the main entrance by the amenity center, it starts turning to about 1 o'clock. The second entrance is up there across from Rest In Place, and you can see there's three phases in dashed lines separate those. The, probably the nicest thing on the site, and, and this may have been what, 15, 20 years ago, when this was getting adopted on the first city zoning thing back in about 2005, Ray Tyner told me earlier today, the, the wetlands around the periphery of the project provide a really nice buffer for, for the neighboring landlords. In addition to that, there's a canal with rightaways that are 50 to 60 foot wide on the north side, and then on the south side, there's another canal, and that one is also 50 to 60 foot wide. The one on the east is 100 feet wide. And this next picture here, this shows you what the north canal looks like, so you can see, I'm not a tree expert, but I can tell you that there's a lot of pine trees along there, and so that, that's the drainage canal, and on the left side, that's the trail that the public works and stormwater facilities use to do maintenance on it. This is the, a six-unit concept that they provided for the front building elevation. One thing that we require that's pretty unique to Palm Coast, multi-family units have to have, one-third of the units have to have a garage. We typically have to fight with the developers to get that, show them exactly where it is in the code, and say, hey, you know, if you want approval, you got to get the one-third, they're asked for waivers and variances, and Mr. Tyner will tell them, no, there's no waiver on that type of thing. In this case, each unit's getting one garage per unit, and then on the left side, so 30 of the units have a double, or a two-car garage, which is, which is rather neat. So, instead of 216 garages with one-third of, 216 homes with one-third getting garages, we actually end up with 216 homes with 246 garage spaces. This is the amenity center, it's one-story. This is a breakdown of the residential units that council has requested a little more information on previous multi-family projects. So, we have no one-bedroom units, they're all two and three-bedroom. The two-bedroom units are 1,389 square feet, and the three-bedroom units range from 1,471 to just over 2,000 square feet of living area per unit. These are the development criteria, the, the real key one here is maximum building height, they could actually go 50 feet here, they're staying at two stories, and the development order guarantees that they can't go over 35 feet in height. These are the five key review criteria from section 2.5.5. A, they must not be in conflict with the public interest. Red Mill Point is designated mixed-use on the future land use map, and based on the site plan layout, it will be compatible with existing and allowed uses on neighboring properties. B, must be consistent with both the land development code and comprehensive plan. The project does meet three goals, policies, or objectives of the comprehensive plan. It meets all standards of the land development code for a master site plan. Criteria C, must not impose a significant liability or hardship on the city. Public facilities such as water and sewer are available to serve the site, or will be extended by the developer at his expense. And the developer will also be subject to concurrency standards as they move forward. In this case, the water line out there, the, some of the neighbors at the public participation meeting, or the neighborhood meeting, mentioned that the water pressure was a little bit low. So, staff has talked to utilities, as well as the applicant's civil engineer, and they're, they're going to run a separate water line out there that will run parallel to the cities, which will let the city provide some cross-connections between the two water lines, which will basically put the project, the new project will go on the new water line, but these cross-connections will actually boost the water pressure for the existing water lines for the neighbors out there. So, that was a, a good comment from one of the neighbors, and, and so we have good news to provide on that one.
Just a question, who's going to pay for the, that separate line?
The developer, the developers required to do off-site improvements at their own cost.
Thank you.
D, must not create unreasonable hazard or nuisance, and, and the project will be, all improvements will be newly con... all improvements will be newly constructed, and will have to meet the land development code and all other standards such as St. John's River Water Management District. And E, must comply with all applicable government standards. Okay, the, if this is approved, the next step for the project would be, they would apply for a technical site plan. This would be done administratively. So they really get two choices. You can do a technical site plan and do all the engineering upfront, and then run it through to the planning board and city council, or you can do a master site plan, which is more like what planners look at every day and, and push the engineering back to the next step, which is like underground utilities and the design of the stormwater system and stuff like that. So the master site plan really lets us determine, and the applicant's design team determined that the project will fit in the spaces as shown on the project. For public participation, they sent a neighbor, a letter out to the neighbors. There was a lot of neighbors within three hundred feet. I believe it was over a hundred letters that went out. The neighborhood meeting was held on November first at the Hilton. Thirty members of the public attended, as well as the developers' team and three city staff members. In addition to that water pressure concern, the biggest concern was vehicular and pedestrian traffic, especially related to congestion caused by Rimfire Elementary. Other comments were, what about school concurrency? And the, they, they, in that case, they've already sent something into the Flagler County School District and talked to Patty Bott, the school district planner, and, and then the last comment was questions on perimeter screening and buffers. So the, the reason we don't have fifty or a hundred people here is because the canals and the wetlands provide very good screening from those. I've talked to some neighbors, including the two neighbors that have the houses on the east, on the five-acre lots to the east, and, and once I explained to them that the trees and the woods and the wetlands that would be between them, they seemed to be satisfied that, at least at that time, that the project would be not detrimental to their property values. Planning board heard this on December fifteenth. No one from the public spoke for or against the project. Planning board found it in compliance with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to city council by a six-zero vote. As I mentioned, this would go to be a technical site plan. They would come in, and once that's approved, they would apply for a site development permit, do a pre-construction meeting, commence construction of the infrastructure, and then they can do a building permit. The planning and land development regulation board found the project in compliance with the comprehensive plan and recommended approval to city council for application number forty-eight seventy-one, Red Mill Point, a master site plan tier three for two hundred and sixteen homes, so the developer may apply for a, a technical site plan that would need to meet all development requirements and subject to just one condition, that landscape and irrigation plans shall be submitted by the applicant for review by the city during the technical site plan process. And the applicant's team is here, and they do have a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and public. My name is Bob Koechke, and I'm the president of Bright Homes, a developer of this particular Red Point, Red Mill Point development. Okay, here we go. So I'll make this brief, since a lot of the information was already covered by Mr. Hoover and Mr. Tyner. This is our development, a little bit about Bright Homes. We are building in eight different markets within the state of Florida, but we are a Florida central builder. We've been building in Palm Coast since two thousand eighteen. Over the last twenty-four months, we've constructed and closed and the sale of eighty-five homes. We have about twenty homes under contract to be sold currently, and about fifty-four homes that are under construction, a big, a large number of them in the R section where Red Mill Point will be developed. As we mentioned earlier by staff, the, the beauty of this particular site is that seventy-one percent of the acreage is going to be preserved as open space or wetlands. So we are only building on about thirty percent of the available square footage, and it is naturally buffered on all sides with wetlands, canals, or preserve. This is a site plan rendering of how we envision this site to be built out, with the amenity center up front, two entrances and exits, both gated. This is the, the more detailed site plan, already explained by Mr. Hoover and how this looks. Again, seventy-one percent preserved, open areas or wetlands. This is what our community impact is, and this was really geared toward the community meeting that we held on November first. We're gonna be generating about three and a half million dollars of impact fees. We did do a traffic impact analysis as required by the city that was done by an independent party in August of two thousand twenty-one, and it determined that there would be no additional traffic beyond the current level of service that's dictated by the code. There was a school impact analysis done by Flagler County Schools. The immediate in vicinity area of this, of this development is Rimfire Elementary. Rimfire Ele- Elementary is currently under capacity, and the development will not add any additional capacity beyond what's already open in Rimfire, and that was done by the Flagler County School Board. This is a little bit more detail on the units that we are offering, as Mr. Hoover had mentioned. We are building a little bit of a different type of project here. Every single home will have a garage. Where we could, we put master down plans to accommodate the, the need for demographic of that particular plan, and those typically will have two-car garages as well. This is all in addition to the additional parking that we have on site, as well as at the amenity center.
Excuse me. Also, would you know that number of, from the schools?
The number of...
Of, of space they have, or did they tell you?
Yeah, they, they did. They gave us an impact study for concurrency, and, and again, the only one that I have listed here really is Rimfire Elementary, which is under capacity. The other two, we're still going through concurrency with Flagler County on.
You don't know how under they are?
I think they're over capacity, so that's why we're going through the, the survey with them, for the, for the middle school and for the high school. This is the six-unit concept. You've already seen this, our amenity center. What we do is a builder that kind of differentiates us from other builders as we build in energy-efficient homes. We have LED lighting. We have Energy Star appliances. We use quartz countertops, upgraded insulation, energy-efficient windows, everything to make the home as energy-efficient as possible. In fact, on our single-family homes, we sell the majority of homes with solar energy on them. This is the major differentiators for us from a finish level, stone accents on the facade, stucco elevations, cement siding on the rear and sides, and pavers on the driveway. Of course, this is all subject to modification based on the final plan approval. That's all that I have, unless there's any questions?
Is it building this project for sale or for rent?
That's a great question. It came up in the community meeting as well. Our ownership is typically built for sale. They haven't yet decided on a final exit, whether it be for sale, for rent, or a mix of both.
Who hasn't decided yet?
Our owner.
Council members, questions?
I think the natural buffer is advantageous for this project. That's something that we rarely see in developments that is specifically inside of some of our more of neighborhoods that have been urbanized. The natural wetlands here are something that I don't recall seeing on many of our projects that come before us.
I wanna know about market price, but I guess my, the, the correct question would be, there's no, you're, you're not taking advantage of any government restriction on capping prices?
No, in, in fact, we envision this to be a pretty high-scale opportunity for us to develop in this area. The retail pricing would be high threes, low fours. Rent, if that was something that our owner decided to go with, would be at market or above.
Did you, just recap real quick. Did you say some of the, some of the units would have upwards of twenty-one hundred square feet living space?
Yes.
You said that's also bigger than we traditionally see?
Yeah, the ones are thirteen eighty-nine.
Yep.
And it's the bigger ones.
Yeah, that was something I was gonna ask, too, if they were for sale or for rent, because there's many people he- here that are looking to downsize, and we don't have that many townhouses here.
I have nothing.
I would, uh, open up for a public comment at this time. Are there any members of the public, seeing very few here, that would like to come forward and speak on this project at this time? Seeing none, I will return to city council.
Excuse me, Mayor. I, I did step out for a moment, but I wasn't sure if we confirmed if you had any ex parte communications regarding this item.
I have not.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Being that there's no one here, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Then let's roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Branquino?
No.
Councilmember Barbosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Affirmative.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Next item is number ten, and actually, it's one of two. If council would leave the title for us, please.
Yes, this is for an interlocal agreement with Flagler County regarding Marineland Acres Drainage and Roadway Improvements Project, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement with Flagler County regarding Marineland Acres Drainage and Roadway Improvements Project, authorizing the city manager or designate to execute the agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Peter Rousseau, Utility, and I'm, I'm here today with Danny Ashburn, and we're here to answer any questions with this...
Gentlemen, thank you for, for appearing, for, for any questions. I'll just wait for Mr. Clufus to return, but we went through the, the question on these interlocals. Does anybody need a refresher or reminder on, on the item? I made my commitment to you all at the last meeting, and I'll stick to it.
All right.
I just have a question or two. On this project, we're gonna be servicing Marineland. How long is it gonna take for us to make our money back on the stuff that we're gonna sell them? Do you have any idea?
No, not really. I think that probably, I think that we might have something in here. If I may, if I remember from a slide from the last meeting, you were on virtual. I think there was a, a slide, a, an item at the bottom of one of the slides that showed that the net difference was a positive of, I remember the number, two seventy-three. Let's see.
At the bottom, approximate added value.
Right.
Six hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Six hundred and eighty, I think the councilman was asking you about what period of time.
How long is it gonna take for us to get this money back by, by selling the services? And the reason why I'm saying this is clear. I, I, I know, I, I'm, I'm not gonna stop this project. My vote is not gonna stop this project, but I still didn't like the, excuse the word arrogance that the county treated us, not this people that are there now, the people that was there before, the way they treated us, the city, okay? You're gonna get it, period. You're gonna pay for it, period, and we paying for it. When I asked for us to go back there and see if they could, you know, put a little more money into it, I think we ended up paying even more money than we were supposed to pay. So the arrogance, in my opinion, is still there, but that's the reason I'm asking. How long is it gonna take before the job we paying for the county?
And I think part of the, part of the answer would be, would be determined by the, by the usage rate. In other words, I, I'm not sure we can predict the usage rate, which would determine how long it actually takes to come to that, to that number, but, but I understand.
Would you say ten years, twenty years?
It's possible. I'd have to get back and look at the usage, like what Mayor said, the usage, and come up with, with the population and how much we're actually using, and maybe we can probably come back with another, with a figure for you regarding that. But there is one side benefit of this whole project is, that's, has not been mentioned here, is water quality. This project involves drainage and streets that are gonna be repaved later on, probably in a couple of years, and we typically go there quite often because there's dead ends, and we have to flush those lines out to keep a disinfectant residual. We have a tough time right now because we, when we do that, we can't do it for very long because the, the dirt roads, they get flooded out pretty quick, and we get, you know, some people that get pretty upset about that. So with the paved roads, I think we're gonna have a better opportunity to accomplish a better water quality, preventing the stagnant water conditions. So that's a helpful, I think that's a side benefit for this project.
I think the utility department has taken note of your comment that you made at the last meeting and this one, so moving forward, I'm, I...
Just wanna reiterate.
No, no, and I think they're taking good note of that, so good comment, okay. Any other questions at this time?
No.
I'll open it up to the public. Any members of public like to come forward and comment at this time? Seeing none, I will come back to city council. Any further questions?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion.
I'll second it.
And a second, okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Pass five to zero.
So let's move on to the second, which is another part of this same discussion.
So this is a resolution, this is item number ten. This is a resolution, I'm, excuse me, this is item number eleven. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement with Flagler County regarding utility infrastructure improvements utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act, authorizing the city manager or designate to execute the agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
So, council, this is an administrative...
So, no, that's the next item, number twelve is. This is another, this is an interlocal agreement. This was discussed at your workshop, and this is a method of how the, basically the sub-grant agreement from the funds that the county received from the American Rescue Act.
This is how the payments occur, so this is the...
This is the money that we're getting from the grant.
Right, okay.
From the federal government through the county, and the, and staff can talk about the two projects that are part of this grant funding.
Yeah, Danny Ashburn, manager of waste water operations. This is an extension of the sewer main on the beachside from the Jungle Hut area up to Malacampera on the west side of A one A, then it goes east on Malacampera down to the community center and the park area. It's probably the first leg of many phases to come as far as getting, you know, centralized sewer over on the beachside. Obviously, the, the idea is to eliminate as many septic systems as you can to cut back on the nitrogen and phosphorus for, you know, sewer overflow, flooding. So, be an opportunity for businesses on A one A and hopefully lead to residential connections to the sewer system.
So it provides the opportunity for future development, certainly on the commercial side as well there, while eliminating the need for the septic.
Right.
Questions from city council?
No.
Very good. Okay, then I would open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to come forward and make comment at this time? Seeing none, close public comment, come back to...
Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion passes five to zero.
Very good, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is item eleven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving an interlocal, I'm sorry, it's number twelve. I am sorry. Boy, I'm, I'm, I need to, I need to wake up. It's past my bedtime. Okay, this is item number twelve, a resolution of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two budget relating to utility capital project fund revenues and expenditures, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. So this is essentially the resolution, the budget amendment, to be able to move funds for what's being done under the, what was just described by staff for the sewer force main extension.
So ladies, you're, you're, you've been warming up for a long time this evening. You're here to answer any questions. This is what I was alluding to before.
Right.
This is the machine that actually makes it happen. So are there any questions from city council to these lovely ladies here?
Let the funds flow.
Come on up, huh? Come up, huh? So I would then open it up to public comment, are there any members of the public that would like to make comment at this time? Seeing none, back to the dais, any further discussion? I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Other than it's three o'clock in the morning for my body.
I, I, I feel you, I feel your pain. Then, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, ladies, thank you. And we move near the end to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any city council member would like to remove?
Not remove, just a question. Number sixteen?
Yep.
It says one inmate labor work crew? Do we, is that to add one more, or, because we used to have two before.
Oh, good question, I thought they were through the sheriff's office.
Can you answer, Denise?
So this particular item is specific to public works. I do not have the answer, and maybe our staff does, about the actual crews we previously had, but this is specific to public work duties. You may be thinking of Stormwater.
Oh, that's not the swales.
Right, correct. But Carl Cody is gonna come up and provide some clarification.
Carl, can you just confirm that?
Yeah, that's correct, Public Works has one crew and Stormwater has two crews.
Good enough?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so then I would ask for motion.
I'll make it.
Motion to, okay, to approve the consent agenda, is ready?
Good, okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved, and we move to public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on any item not previously covered on this evening's agenda?
There was a question that wasn't answered.
On any items that were not already asked. I'll get with you after the meeting. Okay. Then I'll close public participation at this time. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda, are there any items city councilmen would like to raise at this time?
Like to thank the two winners that stayed all day.
What's that?
I'd like to thank the two guys that stayed all night.
Off your taxes next year.
So there are none, city council members? Yes, sir.
Okay. First, Happy New Year to all of you, my colleagues.
Welcome back.
Steph, be at least as good as you were last year, you were phenomenal, every single one of you, got no bad words whatsoever for all of you. I'm pretty sure that my colleagues all got this, Quality Cities, it's one paragraph, it's a well-written finance, ins and outs of municipal reserves, written by Robert Inzer, it's gonna take like about fifteen, twenty seconds. And one of the things he says, developing and adopting comprehensive reserve policies is prudent fiscal management. A government that operates without reserves is just like a family without any savings. As soon as there is a disruption or income, an expecting measure expenditure, they will have a real problem. Cities that have set aside reserve balance over several years will find crisis and much, will find the crisis much more manageable. And here the part that I really wanna emphasize, it takes political leadership not to cut taxes or not to spend every penny collected, although using your reserves to cut taxes might appeal to residents, a weak reserve fund puts your citizens at risk when there's a crisis. Pretty well, and I advise my colleagues to read the rest of this, of this article, very, very good. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Are there any matters to be discussed by the city attorney at this time?
I have a twenty-minute presentation. Legislative, just kidding, no, I have nothing.
Nothing this evening. City manager, any final comments?
No, nothing, thank you.
Then at this moment, and again, to second vice mayor, I wish everybody a very healthy and Happy New Year, maybe we enjoy this every day going forward, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second, all in favor? Aye, gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah, it looks pretty, I'll let him know and see if we could, I thought, man, this If we had to continue it to the next day?
Wait, I'll come to you. Are you coming here, okay? Come talk to me. What's just the question?
No idea. She said eight-hundred, but there's no numbers on it, there's just a?
Oh, how many there are?